Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call the meeting to order, please. I'm going to ask Chief Ted Smith, our Fire Chief, to come down here and say the pledge with me. I want everyone to get to know Ted. Needless to say, we're in a drought situation. I think our fire season may start a little early this year. Ted is a good man to know. Beat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña, present. Mayor Pro Tem Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here. Just one request for a contingent, is actually, we're going to do a change of order on a department report on the traffic control measure. We're going to move that up to the first report. All right? So we're going to go to special presentations now, and I'm going to go down to the podium. All right, thank you. All right, this evening, we're very happy to have with us the Westlake High School Mock Trial Team, led by Ms. Ashley Tompkins. She's a social science teacher at Westlake High School, and she is the advisor for the team. Ashley, you want to join me down here at the podium? And why don't the team come down as well? Mock trial is really an excellent way for students to hone their presentation skills, their speaking skills, and these kids break up into two teams, prosecution and defense, and they go about trying an actual, well, a made-up case. In this particular case, it was about stolen art. And they compete against other teams here in Ventura County, and ultimately end up in the Ventura County Government Center, in front of a real judge, working these particular cases. And I'm happy to announce, the Westlake High School team, out of 33 teams, came in in the top four in all of Ventura County. So let's hear it for them. I can tell you, these kids worked really hard, weekends, evenings, a lot of hours put in, so they really deserve the recognition. And Ashley, I'd like for you to come up, if you would, and say a few words, and perhaps thank a few people.
I feel lucky to be the teacher advisor for Mock Trial at Westlake High School, and it's a job that I really couldn't do without some amazing volunteers who dedicate countless hours to this program, starting in August and going all the way through competition in February. So I'd like to recognize our attorney coaches, who are sitting in the audience, Mark Jesse, David Thompson, Terry Gray, and Catherine Barrett. And they're really at the heart of this program. They make it possible. And of course, I feel lucky to work with such an amazing group of students. They're so talented, and so gifted, and so willing and ready to work. So it's really been a privilege for me.
Thank you, Ashley. We're going to read off each student's name. I'm going to present them with a certificate, and we can start right here. And let me give you one to start with.
Thank you.
Certificate of recognition.
Rita Abed Elahad.
Right behind me.
Allison Adam.
Yes, this is my daughter.
Kevin Barlov. Lily Guo. Noah Karas. Brooke Copel.
Oh, right here, hi, Noah.
Jerry Song.
Jerry.
Sean Sutejo. Lauren Thomas. Yori Vardi. Jonathan Victor.
Jonathan Victor, okay. Hmm. Jonathan, my man, we're going to have to owe you a certificate.
We're good.
But I could give you a badge. Ah, there we are. Hello, Indigo.
Hello.
Tia S. Webster.
Tia S., there we are.
Garrison Wilkins. And Rick Zier.
All right, let's hear it for the Mock Trial Team. Let's get a...
How did you do against Stasen?
We didn't play.
Okay, thank you very much. And next up, this is National Library Week, and we have one of the premier libraries in Ventura County, if not the nation. I'd like to ask Nancy Schramm to come up. And Nancy sent... Ed Craven here. All right, and we have National Library Week to celebrate. I have a certificate. Our library is a great resource for young and old alike. Councilmember Bill De La Peña's boys spend a lot of time at the library. My kids did, growing up. It's really a premier spot, and I'm happy to be able to honor our library as part of National Library. We can have a certificate to present to you, which encourages all residents to visit the library this week, to take advantage of the wonderful library resources that are available.
Thank you, Mayor Adam, and good evening, members of the City Council, city staff, and community members. I am proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Library. I really do believe that behind every great community is a great library, and here in Thousand Oaks, we certainly have both. I also believe that behind every great library are great library supporters, and for over 60 years, the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library Organization has been working hard as advocates for the library and to raise funds to support library programs and services that enrich the lives of all community residents. So a thank you to the Friends, and a welcome to Ed Craven, who is the current president, and who would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mayor Adam, and council members. On behalf of the 500-plus members of the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library, I happily accept this proclamation. And just to put some numbers on what Nancy said, the Friends in this current fiscal year will be granting the library more than $120,000 that they'll be using to buy electronic reference, eBooks, playaways, sponsoring the One City One Book Program, as well as the Summer Reading Club. The Friends also sponsor cultural bus tours, book discussion groups, and guest speakers and musicians. We're also proud of our contributions to the library, namely, the saltwater aquarium and the early childhood literacy computers. As I mentioned earlier, we are an all-volunteer organization, so please join us. The membership dues are modest, and help us help this great library. Thank you.
Thank you to you both. And now, we have our premier presenter from Cabrillo Music Theater, Lewis Wilkenfeld. Lewis, you want to come up and give some entertainment for us tonight?
Got some entertainment for you.
All right, we're ready.
All right. So are yours. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know why the timing worked out this way, but we have been on the same week as National Library Week for like, three years in a row. And I love this, because we collaborate with the Thousand Oaks Public Library, and we do performances there, and we're always trying to find ways to tie our work to literature. So this is really exciting. I've got a special surprise for you, so I'm going to keep this really, my speaking short, a little more entertainment than usual. That's Natalie in our office, who's handing out some materials. Mary Poppins is coming up. It opens this Friday, runs for two weekends. I'm proud to tell you that our Let's Go Fly a Kite event on March 8th, we had over 200 kids, people there, out on the grass in front of the theater. We had a kite decorating contest, and a kite building contest is one of the winners. And all of our winning kites will be on display in the lobby of the theater during Mary Poppins. Also, I'm proud to say that we're doing, building up partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers Big Sisters. A lot of kids who wouldn't get to see musical theater are going to be seeing Mary Poppins. And a lot of that is due to our brand-new, first-ever director development, and she's here. I dragged her in from the office. It's Maureen O'Boyle Feldman, right over there. I wanted you to see her, and get to know her face, because we will be collaborating together moving forward. I'm also proud to tell you that we'll be working with the Alliance for the Arts, our friends there, to do a shortened student performance of Mary Poppins next Wednesday morning for underserved children. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful time. Coming up, we have Oklahoma this summer, Roger and Hammerstein's classic musical, and it's the 60th anniversary of the movie. Perfect time to do the show, and Shirley Jones will be doing some interviews on our behalf, and she's joined our advisory board of Cabrillo Music Theater. Next season, just to touch on it very briefly, we will have Damn Yankees in the fall, A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum, classic comedy musical, right in here, in the Sheer Forum, perfectly named, A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Sheer Forum. And next spring, Children of Eden, the musical by the composer of Wicked, Stephen Schwartz. It's all about Adam and Eve and Noah. And then next summer, perfect bookend for Mary Poppins, Disney's The Little Mermaid. These shows are, it's going to be a great season. Now, Mary Poppins, you know the movie, but the musical has lots of heart, and dance, and new songs, and things you don't know or aren't aware of from the movie. It's April 17th through the 26th, right next door to the Cavali Theater. It's too big a show to be contained here in the Sheer, so we're excited to have you there. Something special this Saturday night, April 18th, Pyjama Night. Anybody who brings kids in pajamas, their kids get a photo with Mary Poppins after the show. They get to fall asleep on the drive home, and sweet dreams are guaranteed. Tickets are at Ticketmaster, or come to the Civic Arts Plaza box office, right here, or CabrilloMusicTheater.com, and that's theater with an R-E. Our Cabrillo Kids are going to be at all performances, and here's where I have a treat for you. It's actually Tech Week of our show. I'm going to be racing right over next door to watch a tech rehearsal, so none of our cast of Mary Poppins could actually be here tonight, because they're getting in a costume right now to rehearse the show. So I brought our two performing groups. These are our kids that represent Cabrillo Music Theater and you. They represent Thousand Oaks, and they go around the community. When we're entertaining the military at the naval base, it's with our Cabrillo Kids and our Cabrillo Teen Project. When we go to entertain seniors who can't get to see our shows, it's these kids, these two groups. So I'm very proud that the Cabrillo Kids have been working on their show, that they're going to do before every performance of Mary Poppins, Out by the Fountain, and it's based on the music of Richard Sherman, the Sherman Brothers, who wrote Mary Poppins. Richard Sherman is the surviving member of the Sherman Brothers. He will be at opening night. He is going to host a fundraiser on our behalf next, this Sunday, in the Founder's Room, and he's going to, he's taking a very active interest in this production. So, the Cabrillo Kids have been working on the music of Richard Sherman. Here they are with a song from that performance, accompanied by Chris Kimbler. Here are the Cabrillo Kids.
(SINGING) It's a world of laughter, a world of tears. It's a world of hopes and a world of fears. There's so much that we share that it's time we're aware. It's a small world after all. 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 It's a small, small world. It's a small world after all. It's a small world after all. It's a small world after all. It's a small world after all.
So they, we take them around to the community, and then when the Cabrillo Kids grow up, they become part of the Cabrillo Teen Project. This is a group that focuses on more sophisticated music, sophisticated harmonies. They've been working on songs, including one from Mary Poppins, so we thought, a great way to get you in the mood for Mary Poppins. Here is the Cabrillo Teen Project.
(SINGING) For every job that must be done, there is an element of fun. You'll find the fun is not the jobs that came. For every task you undertake becomes a piece of cake. A lark, a spree, is very clear to see. That a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. The medicine go down, medicine go down. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down in a most delightful way. A robin feathering his nest has very little time to rest while gathering his twine and twig. Though frightened tent in his pursuit, he has a merry tune to tune. He knows a song will move the job along. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. The medicine go down, medicine go down. Just a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down in a most delightful way. In a most delightful way.
That's the Cabrillo Teen Project. I want to thank you for letting us come and bring some entertainment to you. Mary Poppins runs this weekend and next, perfect for all ages. You're never too cool to enjoy Mary Poppins. And of course, our best gift to all of you here in the room is that no matter how things go for the rest of the night, you will be humming "It's a Small World" and "Spoonful of Sugar" for the rest of the evening. I want to thank you all for having us here. Have a wonderful evening, and we'll see you at the theater.
Nice job, as always. All right, we're going to go to public comments now, if you would call for that. Ms. Lawrence?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three people have presented cards and pursuant to Council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
All right, we have three speakers. The first is Jana Covell, followed by Dr. Ellsley. Hi, Jana.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents. I'm Jana Covell, Thousand Oaks resident, and a member of the city staff, and I'm chair of the city's Arbor Day/Earth Day Committee, which is Saturday, the 18th, and it's our 18th year, so it's kind of apropos, we're on the 18th of April this year. The event is at Caneo Creek Park from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And in addition to our regular vendors and exhibitors, such as the Mobile Marine Lab, the Glenn Garvin Memorial Bike Rodeo, wild animal shows, park rangers, COSCA, all kinds of people, ladybugs, free to give away. New this year, because of the California drought situation, we have several free workshops that are going to be very interesting for people. Biochar and the usage of that to reduce your water use at home, setting up a gray water system, permaculture and designing for drought for your landscape, and of course, composting. So those are going to be wonderful workshops to find out how to get your landscape through the drought situation we have here. And we also have water conservation booths, and many organizations that are going to be handing out tips for environmental use and recycling. So we hope everybody comes out to see us. The event is free, parking is free, we have free shuttle service from the south side, Caneo South, to Caneo Creek North. So come on out and see us, from 11:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, April 18th, at Arbor Earth Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Thanks for chairing that event. Really goes well every year. It's a lot of fun. Dr. Richard Ellsley, followed by, now, I just have a last name here, Schreffler.
Mayor Adam, members of the City Council, and staff, and the community. My name is Richard Ellsley, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here to tell you about the next talk in the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series. Purpose of these talks is to bring in scientists who can talk about important work they're doing, and do it in a way that anybody can understand and enjoy. The next talk will be a week and a half from now, Thursday of next week, April 23rd, and the title is "The Sixth Great Mass Extinction of Life on Earth." Speaker will be Dr. Paul Nargizian of Cal State LA. Five times during the history of our planet, major natural disasters have occurred that have wiped out vast numbers of species on our planet. The most famous is 65 million years ago, when an asteroid, or maybe a lot of volcanoes, or maybe a combination of both, killed off the dinosaurs who had ruled this planet for 100 million years. We have something like that that's happening now. Because of pollution, because of the acidification of the ocean, because of habitat destruction, species are dying off much, much faster than they have at any time over the last million years. The, I saw on the internet today that there are so few white rhinos left in Africa that they have assigned bodyguards, armed bodyguards, to each one, to protect them from poachers. I'm with you. So, how serious is this problem? Come Thursday night, next week, April 23rd, 7:30, here in the Sheer Forum Theater. You can get tickets at the box office, or over Ticketmaster, adults are $15. Children, students, teachers, seniors are $10. For more information, you can go to our website, ScienceSpeakerSeries.org, or call 805-905-8168. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ellsley.
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, all right, Ms. Schreffler.
Deborah Schreffler, Newbury Park. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Schreffler, Newbury Park. April 25th is Parental Alienation Awareness Day, and I wanted to explain that parental alienation is when one alienating parent manipulates a child's mind to sever the ties between the child and the target parent in order to destroy... between the child and the target parent in order to destroy the target parent emotionally, financially, or both. When pressure on the child to be loyal to the alienating parent becomes too great, the child gives up and totally rejects the target parent. It is domestic emotional violence against both the child and the target parent without visual, visible bruises. Some alienating behaviors include speaking negatively or lying about the target parent to or in front of the child, interfering with communication or visitation, moving and leaving no contact information, allowing children to make inappropriate decisions such as if they even want to see the other parent, and discussing inappropriate information with the child such as details of the marriage, court proceedings, and financial matters. These behaviors can go as far as preventing essential school and medical information from getting to the target parent. Brainwashing and implanting of false memories are not at all unusual. The most common response of a child exposed to alienating behaviors is extreme resistance to contact with or a phobia of the target parent without any justifiable cause. Even children who have been physically abused still long for a relationship with their parent. Children have to be carefully taught to hate and reject a parent. Parental alienation is both painful and destructive. It takes advantage of a child's suggestibility and dependency and leaves the child feeling confused, frightened, and insecure, leaving deep and lasting emotional scars. It can result in the child's loss of a relationship with a previously loving, nurturing, and competent parent without permission to grieve. Research shows that children who have been alienated from a parent experience a greater percentage of depression, low self-esteem, dropout rates from school, suicidal ideation, serious mental orders, drug and alcohol problems, and difficulties in their own relationships. We urge you to learn more about parental alienation and invite you to visit these resources for the sake of children all over to be able to give and receive the love that they deserve. You may wanna get a copy of this. Please join us on Saturday, April 25th at noon by blowing soap bubbles wherever you are in honor of all children who have been wrongfully deprived of the love of one of their parents to show that kids need to be free, like bubbles, to love both parents. There are bubbles on your way out if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you Deborah. All right, that concludes our public comments. So we're going to move on to consent calendar. Are there any questions from my fellow council members or items to be polled? Councilmember Price? No, all right. Uh, I'll poll 7K. And we do have some speakers this evening. And as I call your name, would you, uh, come on down and kind of stage yourself here so we can move right along? The first name is Keon Shulman, followed by Joel Shulman.
Hello. Hello Mayor Adam and council members. I want to thank you very much for bringing up this item of rodenticides in your city. Our group is Poison Free Malibu. We are dedicated to educating the public with the knowledge of how pesticides affect our environment, children, pets, and wildlife. We'd like to personally thank Mayor Al Adams. You are great. Thank you for your years of dedicated work for preserving the Caneo Valley and Santa Monica Mountains and nature and wildlife for future generations, for your years of dedication and all that you have done. We really appreciate all that you have done and we want to thank you.
Thank you Keon. And next we have Joel Shulman, followed by Julie Newsom.
Hi, thank you, I'm Joel Shulman. Haven't used this kind of machine before. Um, yeah, I'd like to thank you also, and also your staff, uh, who we've talked to extensively. They're, they're fantastic. We've, uh, have a lot of experience in Malibu and also Agoura Hills and Calabasas in what to do after a resolution like this has passed. Uh, can I, how do I get this on? Okay. A resolution is great, but you gotta get the word out to the community for it to actually have an effect. And what we have found, uh, in Malibu is that a large part of the problem, especially at businesses and restaurants and shopping centers, schools, office buildings, homeowners' associations, residential complexes, is what you see on the screen, which is exposed garbage, especially in dumpsters. If you go in the back of shopping centers and other buildings, you will see them all over the place. And, uh, the, the, um, thinking is that in order to, um, solve the problem caused by exposed garbage, that the rodent poison boxes are necessary, which is completely untrue. Here's another view. These poison bait boxes, number one, have the worst second generation of anticoagulant rodenticides which are poisoning our wildlife, um, in them typically. Some people believe that the rodents actually go in and die. They don't. They actually just eat the poison and then go out into the environment. In fact, a combination of the exposed garbage and the rodent poison boxes are basically like a pump. The, uh, the garbage produces the rodents which then go eat the poison and then go out into the environment and are eaten by bobcats and mountain lions, et cetera. It's like a pump. It's, it's completely absurd solution to the problem. And, uh, here's what really should be done. On the right is what we have convinced many Malibu businesses, property management companies, restaurants, et cetera, to do. Simply keep the dumpster closed and locked. Uh, there is actually a municipal code which requires that, which is almost completely ignored in every situation that we've seen. So actually, a major accomplishment would be just getting the existing municipal code enforced, which would mean keeping the dumpster lids closed. That would be a major, major step. It's that, it's really not that hard. People exaggerate the difficulty of achieving a rodent-free environment. Here's an example that came up in Thousand Oaks, uh, in back of the Oaks Mall where you can see the poisoned bobcat on the lower right, which was seen by a friend of ours right outside her office window. She went around the neighborhood and found poison bait boxes in all those locations.
Joel, we have to finish up.
Right, uh, thank you. Which were producing the poison that was killing the wildlife. So we are going to ask you for an outreach program to actually implement the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.[1114.78][1114.78](applause) Joel, we have a question for you from Councilmember Delver Lepanier, has a question?
Thank you for your brief presentation. There are some who are not quite sure what to do with rats and, uh, and other animals once this resolution is in place. Obviously, there has to be community education and outreach. What are some of the alternatives to using the second generation poison?
We have, uh, we do have a detailed outline plan that we've given, that we are discussing now with Calabasas and Agoura Hills for exactly that purpose. But the number one thing is, uh, keeping, is treating the trash, trash produces the rodents overwhelmingly. That's number one. Number two is sealing up buildings. That is very, very obvious stuff. Homeowners' associations especially, I gave a talk a few weeks ago, have to, absolutely there is no substitute for sealing up a building and, uh, and treating the trash correctly.
All right, thank you Joel. Julie Newsom, followed by Kathy, Kathy Schoenmacher. Hi Julie.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Because wildlife does not restrict itself to wild lands, because our children and pets cannot read the warning labels on bait boxes that are filled with poisons, we have a responsibility to make things safe for them. You, the city leaders of Thousand Oaks, have an amazing opportunity to make a stand against these poisons by passing a resolution against the sale and use of all anticoagulant rodenticides. This action will continue in line with your enlightened efforts that you've already put into action. It's my hope that you'll maintain the foresight and concern for the future of this city by creating informative and educational programs that deal with this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you Julie.[1234.02][1234.02](applause) Kathy Schoenmacher, followed by Carol Smith. Hello Kathy.
Hi, I'm biologist that works with the National Park Service, and, um, I want to talk quickly about the anticoagulants and what we've seen, um, with the bobcats that we've been studying in this area for over 14 years. And, um, we've been studying bobcats in, um, Thousand Oaks and the nearby cities which are extremely fragmented by natural habitat. And what we have found is that 91% of adult bobcats in our study have, um, died from anticoagulant rodenticide poisons, or have been exposed to anticoagulant rodenticide poisons, I'm sorry. Um, and 86% of the juveniles also have been exposed to anticoagulant rodenticide poisons. And even two fetal bobcats that we were able to, um, pull from a pregnant female were also exposed to these anticoagulant rodenticide poisons. The overall, um, research study has shown that 95% of bobcats that we have studied were exposed to anticoagulant rodenticide poisons, and that, um, the exposure of these bobcats were associated with altered natural spaces, um, such as golf courses and city parks, and also, um, residential areas and commercial areas. So they had close association with those areas. They would come into them in the evenings and at nighttime to feed on rodents and rabbits. Um, we believe the development of an outreach program, which is something that we've actually decided to start working on, um, with, um, Mountains Restoration Trust, um, to educate the public and to educate homeowners specifically is our goal right now, um, is the way to go to give them, first of all, let them know and be aware of what's going on out there with, and what's happening to our local wildlife and bobcats, but also to give them alternatives, as you were saying earlier, give them alternatives on how to deal with these, um, these rodents and other wildlife in the area. If that's something that at some point you might want to partner with us, we, um, more than likely, we would love to partner and build a relationship and get the information out. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy.[1368.02][1368.02](applause) Carol Smith, followed by Raymond Sabrina. Hi Carol.
Hi. Good evening Mayor Adam, City Council Members. My name is Carol Smith, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'd just like to say what an amazing place we live in. We have all the conveniences of an urban area, and yet we're surrounded by open space and wild land with incredible vistas and wild creatures such as hawks and owls and coyotes all around us. I feel that as a community, we share a deep appreciation for the open space around us and for the wild creatures that share it with us. I'm thankful that the City Council Members understand the harm being done to our wildlife by the use of anticoagulant rodent poisons. We all know the negative aspects of this poison. Uh, the inherent cruelty of it, for one, the danger to children and pets. One of my own friends is currently, um, dealing with recovery of his dog eating poison right in his own yard. And the great harm done to wildlife through secondary poisoning. We do need to take action now, and passing this resolution is an important first step. But there is a second and equally important action, and that is to educate people in this community about what's happening to the wildlife. We need an intensive outreach campaign for businesses and residents, educating them on the harm that's being done by these poisons and outlining alternatives. Many people, I believe, are actually completely unaware that there's any effect on wildlife. And I do believe that they would be horrified to learn that they had inadvertently poisoned a barn owl, for example, that they enjoy seeing flying around on the trails, or a hawk, or a bobcat. They need to know that there are common sense alternatives that are safe and effective. And, uh, one additional thing in addition to what Joel said is stopping leaking pipes, which is also important considering the extreme drought situation that we're in. Um, but the, uh, the residential areas are only part of the problem. Also, the large bait boxes set out in parking lots, shopping malls, and apartment complexes do tremendous harm. So I urge you to pass the resolution to ban rodenticides and to move forward with a strong educational campaign. I believe our community will resonate with this goal with a better understanding of what is at stake. So let's get some healthy bobcats back in our hills again. And thank you.[1528.02][1528.02](applause)
Thank you Carol. Raymond Sabrina, followed by Sherri Ferber.
Good evening Councilmembers and residents and non-residents of Thousand Oaks. I am a licensed exterminator. I have been licensed for almost 20 years. I run a small company. I have used secondary anticoagulants. It is a very good bait. It helps reduce the population of rats in the situations. The boxes might not be pretty, but they work. The secondary poisoning, I haven't gotten too much from it, to be honest with you. I believe that we should continue to keep it the way it is. Rats are a very difficult pest to control. I have, um, I have used the boxes for many years as it is. I believe I have good effect. The bait does not, all of a sudden, the rat does not pick up the bait and take it outside. The bait is locked into a little, um, rod which the rat eats. He, he consumes it, he takes it back, and he can die like I, like I warn people, because I tell him, I can go this way or I can go the conventional trapping, with trapping slower to get control. He could die in your yard, it grosses you out. He could die, you know, next door that doesn't even know what's going on, it grosses them out, but at least we get a kill. I have not heard much about the bobcat situation or the coyote problem, but I'll tell you this, if we, if we do ban rodenticides, rats produce a litter of 18 to 24 young within three to six months, and then of course you'll have a population outburst. As it is, we are having a rat epidemic in the Thousand Oaks area, and I have been trying to control it along with my other, my other competitors in the area and so forth. I believe that we need to keep the anticoagulant in the boxes, help us control the problem. We, as, as, as the other fellow said earlier in the day, sanitation is a big part of, of pest control. You can, if, and also so is pet food being left out overnight. People ought to know that it's 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, you get home from work, bring in your pet food, bring in your water dishes. As we all been talking about and hearing about tonight, we do have a drought situation. So you gotta bring everything in. Things are coming out of the hills, rats, squirrels, everything. As someone who has, um, worked in this industry since, God knows, since before puberty probably, I can tell you that if we can, if we ban this, we're just gonna lead to a big outflux of, of rats running around Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, the hills. If you want the bobcat to catch it, he might be able, he might get overwhelmed, obviously, because there's gonna be too many of them. We need to keep control in the city. We need to make sure that things are done properly and by professionals. That's why it is restricted by the DPR, Department of Pesticide Regulation, that only licensed operators and technicians can do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Ray. Sherri Ferber, followed by Carla Bollinger.
Good evening Council and community. My name is Sherri Ferber, I'm a resident of Liberty Canyon. I'm a president of the Homeowners Association. We removed our bait boxes eight months ago. We practiced exclusion techniques, and we have had no complaints since moving the boxes. Ironically, we did have complaints when we had the boxes. I appeal to you to pass the resolution banning the rodenticides in the city of Thousand Oaks as it is an environmentally appropriate action to take. And just after listening to the last speaker, I'd like to add a comment. What happens in Vegas may stay in Vegas, but what happens in a rodenticide-fed rat or mouse does not stay in them. Thank you.
Thank you Sherri.[1773.94][1773.94](applause) Finally Carla Bollinger. Hello Carla.
Thank you Mayor and Council Members. I'm Carla Bollinger with the Santa Susana Mountain Park Association. I've been most fortunate at a, a period of time to live in the Simi Hills. I've... I've seen the mountain lions firsthand on a number of occasions, and what was very distressful is to learn two of them died in the Simi Hills because of ARs. And even our celebrity, P-22, had, had somehow ingested in the, some anticoagulant poisoning and ended up with the mange. So when you see the results of what happens when the, our non-target animals are, you know, are ending up very ill, are dead. We don't have to go to foreign countries to have a problem with the loss of our wildlife. It's happening here, and I would hope that the city of Thousand Oaks continues to think in terms of the importance of saving wildlife corridors, open space, limiting the amount of homes built up the ridges, because they often will be using, once they move into an area filled with, with critters and wildlife, they, they end up using poisoning. So I am just standing with the others, saying, let's be more sensible about this, this matter. Economically, when we end up with endangered species, it costs a lot to bring them back, so let's save them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. And I do have three written statement cards, which will enter into the record as well. Thank you, speakers. So I did pull 7K. Can I get a motion on the balance of the consent counter? Councilmember Bill LaPena?
Move the remainder of the, well, actually, can we not vote on everything?
I pulled 7K.
Okay, then the remainder.
The remainder. All right. Motion on the floor, vote please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And I, I just had a comment on 7K. You know, people are always looking for a better way, and we need a better way to conserve water. And I think in this case, we need a better way to control the rodent population, the way we're doing it now. The numbers speak for themselves. Virtually all the apex predators in the Santa Monica Mountains have rodenticide in them: coyotes, bobcats, mountain lions. It's taking a toll, and we only have about a dozen mountain lions left in Santa Monica's. To me, wildlife is an asset to be protected, just like this building, just like the Hill Canyon Treatment Plan. It's an asset of the community. I, I think the protection of the wildlife trumps the convenience of these anticoagulants, and we need to join the cities of Agora Hills, Calabasas, Malibu, Moore Park, Ojai, Westlake Village in adopting this resolution. We won't use them as a city, and we'll encourage others to not use them as well, and launch an education program at the same time. So with that, I, oh, can I move to, I think I have to ask for a motion from one of my fellow council members on this particular item. As a chair, I, I'm not able to move. So, Mr. Fox, would you?
Sure, I'll move 7K.
All right. Motion to move 7K. Vote please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, that's approved. All right. Thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to our public hearing for the evening. If our city clerk would announce that, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8A, regarding municipal code amendment, MCA 2014-70145, to modify oak and landmark tree ordinances related to owner-planted oak trees and procedural standards for removal requests for parking area oak and landmark trees. Also, consideration of extending the interim urgency ordinance declaring a moratorium on administrative review procedure for the removal of four or more planted nursery-grown parking area oak trees, or six or more planted nursery-grown parking area landmark trees, and on issuance of any verification of owner-planted oak tree exemption status. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Right now, we have 20 speaker cards, and speakers are allowed two minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. So first, we're going to go to Mr. Kearns to lay out the issue for us, and then we'll go to our questions of council, and then to our speakers. Evening, Mr. Kearns.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Adams, members of city council. As mentioned before this evening, are two proposed, two items. First is a municipal code amendment proposing modifications to the existing oak and landmark tree ordinance related to two specific areas. And the second is extension of a moratorium related to these items. As a background, related to the items before you tonight, in May of 2014, city council initiated this municipal code amendment to consider changes to the procedural requirements relating to requests for removal of oak and landmark, or oak and landmark trees planted in parking areas and related to the oak, the owner-planted oak tree exemption existing in the code now. At a subsequent meeting, city council imposed a 45-day moratorium to allow time to consider these items. In June of 2014, city council extended the moratorium by additional 10 and a half months and agreed to form an 11-member ad hoc committee to consider these items, which consisted of three residents, three business representatives, two homeowners association representatives, two landscape professionals, and one public agency representative other than from the city itself. In September of 2014, city council appointed 10 of the 11 members to the committee, and subsequently in October, appointed the 11th member. And this committee kicked off its first meeting in October of 2014, and subsequently met an additional four times, and ultimately coming up with a formalizing recommendation in January of 2015. In February of 2015, this item was brought in front of the planning commission. The planning commission considered the staff evaluation as well as the recommendation by the committee and formalized their own recommendation. As, as mentioned, there are, there are two items before you tonight. The first relates to the procedural requirements for requests for removal of planted nursery-grown oak and landmark trees within parking areas. Currently, the municipal generally requires that the planning commission review any request for removal of four or more oak or four, or six or more landmark trees. And the request for removal, request for removal of less than these thresholds could be considered at staff level. I say generally, but because in 2002, the code was changed to provide a procedural distinction between trees that were planted as part of a parking area landscaping plan and those that are indigenous. So back in 2002, any number of oak trees or landmark trees requested for removal that are planted as part of the parking area landscaping plan could be considered at staff level. Both the ad hoc committee and planning commission considered this, this issue and made the same recommendation, which is to revert the code essentially back to what was in place prior to the 2002 amendment. So requests for removal of more than four oak trees, four or more oak trees, or six or more landmark trees would require consideration by the planning commission. And thereby providing no distinction between a tree planted as part of a landscaping plan and an indigenous tree. And staff's recommendation is in agreement with the committee and planning commission's recommendation to city council. The second item under the MCA tonight is the issue of the owner-planted tree exemption in the code, which was adopted in 2010. And the provisions in the code now state that any oak tree that's verified as owner-planted through a city process would be exempted from the oak tree ordinance provisions. Currently, that applies to every property within the city, and any number of oak trees that are verified as owner-planted can be exempted from the ordinance. The ad hoc committee is recommending that the city maintain an oak tree exemption procedure, an owner-planted oak tree exemption procedure, but refine it to make it only applicable to single, single-family residential properties. And they're proposing a limit on the number of trees that can be exempted by staff to a number, to a maximum of three in perpetuity on the property, and that more than three trees can be considered and exempted by the planning commission through the verification The planning commission considered the item and is also recommending maintaining an exemption process but eliminating the oak, the owner-planted qualifier, thereby allowing exemption of any oak tree on, also on single-family residential properties. The, the planning commission is recommending that three trees, a maximum of three trees are exempted at staff level per a period of 10 years, and then after 10 years, an additional three trees can be exempted. And requests involving more than three trees would be considered by planning commission as well. Staff is, is in agreement with the ad hoc committee recommendation, which would limit the exemption process to single-family properties, which is representative of the majority of requests we've received to date. And that limiting single, limit to single-family properties is also consistent with the recommendation provided to city council in 2010. The exemption would provide cost relief to homeowners in the sense that an application would no longer be required by the city for any sort of work to or around an oak tree. And this exemption could encourage the planting of oak trees in residential properties. Their recommendation also maintains protection of indigenous trees. The second item before you this evening is consideration of extending the existing moratorium. Right now, the moratorium is set to expire on May 27th of this year. If the city council introduced an ordinance tonight, the earliest it would become effective would be May 29th. So there'd be a two-day gap where the, the current provisions would go into full effect. State law allows the city to extend this moratorium by an additional year, provided that the city has taken measures to alleviate the issue that's under moratorium, which the city has, city council has initiated the municipal code amendment, considered the item. They assigned staff, established an ad hoc committee to review it, and assigned the planning commission to make a recommendation, and tonight, the city council is considering it. So it's within your purview to extend the moratorium. In order to do so, it does require a four-fifth vote. In tonight's situation, that will require consensus of all members of the council. Staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance as recommended by the ad hoc committee and adopt the urgency interim ordinance, extending the moratorium for an additional year. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Back to Mr. Kearns. Questions? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, thanks. Mr. Kearns, I guess my issue really boils down to the enforceability of the residential aspect of the three trees per property per 10-year period. What is staff's proposal for enforcement of that?
Well, it would require an application submitted by the homeowner to start the process, and from the date that that application is submitted, we would log the application along with any exhibit showing the location and type of tree. And from that point, the 10-year period would start. So if we get, it would be complaint-based. We would react, just like we do now. If someone's doing work to a tree, we would receive a phone call or in-person complaint, and we'd react to that and go out there and investigate it, and if it's determined that that tree is one of the trees exempted, then there would be no action taken. If not, then we pursue through the, through the penalty ordinance.
And what is the, what's the wisdom behind three trees per 10 years?
I believe that was just to limit the number of trees that potentially could be removed.
Every 10 years?
Within that 10-year period, right.
So if somebody had six trees on their property, they could remove six trees after a 10-year period?
Hypothetically, it'd be after a 20-year period. It'd be, once, three for every 10 years, and then they come back after three, after 10 years, and we could exempt an additional three, unless it went to the planning commission, and the planning commission can exempt any number of trees.
All right. All right, I'm, I'm just going to give everybody a heads up. I, I'm going to go back to staff. I certainly want to hear from the public comment, but I, I'm going to be looking for staff to give us maybe a little more concrete recommendations as it relates to the homeowner trees. We have some correspondence in the packet from homeowner associations. You know, they have some issues with this, and, and I certainly don't want to send this back to the committee, but I think we need to have staff take a look at this in terms of enforcement and the, the practicality of how we would implement this. So those are just my early comments, but I want to hear from the, want to hear from the speakers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Fox. Ms. Bill LaPena?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Kearns. My question is, when a homeowner would like to remove an oak tree, don't we already have provisions in our law which state that they can remove an oak tree if it's a hazard to public health, safety, property?
Yeah, any tree that's considered dead or hazardous can be removed through a no-fee permit process and evaluation by staff and/or one of our consultants. There's also procedures in place, permit procedures, where an application can be filed for evaluation by the city to consider removal of any tree, regardless of its status, its health, and we just have to make appropriate findings to do so.
If an oak tree damages property, for example, damages the sewer lines, driveways, and so forth, how is that evaluated by staff?
Staff can authorize the removal of any tree that's causing substantial property damage. Now, that is a subjective term, and we look at it based on how much damage, it's actually, how much physical, visible damage it's actually causing, and what it's causing the damage to. So if it's something that's, you know, cracking the sidewalk, that wouldn't be substantial. If it's cracking a slab of a house, that would be considered substantial. But there is a process, as I mentioned, there's an application process for requests for removal of any tree, and if they could show that it's caused damage to their sewer lines or that kind of infrastructure to their home, then we could, we could approve it through a different application procedure.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Price?
Thank you. Did you say through a different application procedure?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry, I didn't mention the application type. There's a, there's, there's five different types. They're alphabetical. There's a type A permit, which is utilized for dead or hazardous trees, type B, which is a simple permit for pruning and operations, C is something that requires a full-blown consultant report and evaluation by our consultant, D would go in front of the planning commission, and then E was the exemption permit, which is under consideration tonight.
And which one of those would apply if this, the, the tree were impacting wastewater
It would be the type C permit. We'd have to evaluate it and review the consultants, their consultant's report to determine what mitigation could be performed to alleviate the problem.
And the, and the costs associated with those different types of applications vary considerably?
Yes, they do.
From nothing to...
Yeah, the, the, the dead or hazardous and the exemption are no-fee permits. The simple encroachment, which would be for simple pruning operations or doing a walk into a tree, is a $225 application filing fee, but there's no deposit associated with that. And then the type C for a single-family residential property is $275 for the application fee, and that also requires a $180 deposit, which is billed against by our, by our consultants as they review it. And then multifamily is 876 plus the deposit of that 180. And then, once you get into the type D, where you have to go in front of the planning commission, it's 2,000, $2,724 plus a $180 deposit.
So hypothetically, if you had an owner-planted tree in your single-family residence that you wish to trim every three years, you would have to, if it were not exempted, you would have to pay that $275 fee in order to...
you would have to pay that $275 fee in order to do the pruning?
Well, for the pruning, it would be the type B permit, the $225 with no deposit. If it went beyond that, if it was a pruning operation, say you had multiple trees, for example, where there was extensive pruning and our consultants weren't comfortable with approving the pruning cuts or the extent of the pruning, then it would kick it into the next level, which is the type C. So at that point, they would have to do the type C. But there's, there's other options if you have multiple trees on your property. In 2010, we established an oak tree maintenance program. That was one of the big changes. It was actually alleviated a lot of permit procedure for, for property owners in the city with multiple oak trees where they could submit that maintenance program, call out what they want to do on a periodic basis, and then perform that work and submit a certification to the city. We would evaluate their pruning cuts and their locations and that would be it. It's a one time application fee and then potentially subsequent deposit monies for our consultant time, but there's no more application filing fees.
So that type of permit then is good in perpetuity?
It is, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Price. And the pruning of these oak trees, I take it is a little more of a delicate operation than some other trees? I mean, that's why the fees are involved because these?
Yeah, the trees are a little more delicate and they're also, of course, protected trees. So we want to make sure they're cut or pruned in accordance with ISA approved pruning standards.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Well, we have 20 speaker cards and our speakers are going to have two minutes apiece this evening. And the first speaker is Frank Bianchino, followed by Janet Wall. And if you'd come down to the front row here as I call the second name, we can move things
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Bianchino. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1977. I'm originally from New York City, from Brooklyn. A tenement house in Beffet Stuyvesant, which we called the concrete jungle. There were no trees. Maybe a tree grows in Brooklyn, maybe one. I've found that I have come here to this particular area to be blessed by God for our beautiful community and numerous oak trees. However, over 128 oak trees have been removed. The Lang Ranch, the Knoll Apartment, Canyon Creek Project, et cetera, with city approval and no documentation of two to one replacement as required of property owners. Now there's a recommendation that the property owners may remove three oak trees. Why three? Why don't you make it four? Why not five? Why do we come to three? Why not one? If the trees are so, such beautiful things here, why should we go with a three or four or five number? I'm concerned about that. And for every 10 years, so that means after 10 years, you can cut down three more oak trees. When will this end? Stop this destruction of God's gift to this beautiful community. Please allow a pathway for legal trimming of oak trees for residents and extend the moratorium for one year to allow the newly elected council member the privilege to vote. Remember that oak trees clean and filter the air quality. They provide shade, lower the temperatures during the humid days, and they enhance our beautiful quality and make our area to the most desirable in the country.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Thank you.
And in closing, remember silence is consent. Please voice your concern and stand up and be counted. Save our oak trees is a moral problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Janet Wall, followed by Chase Rashid.
Good evening. I'm Janet Wall, a Thousand Oaks resident and chair of the former Thousand Oaks Oak and Landmark Tree Ad Hoc Committee. In addition, I'm one of the five members of that committee who disagree with the recommendation approved by five other members of the committee. As you've read, the committee majority recommendation is that single family residents be allowed to remove three owner planted oak trees from their property with an exemption permit. Our minority report states that a 50-year-old oak tree planted by a homeowner is often as valuable and worth saving as a 100 or 200-year-old indigenous oak tree. In addition, our five-member oak tree team believes that the inclusion of developer planted mitigation trees in the definition of owner planted defeats the essence of mitigation for hundreds of valuable oak trees removed during the last 40 years. The Thousand Oaks Planning Commission advise you tonight that they too believe there is no distinction between a 50-year-old owner planted tree and a heritage indigenous tree. But where they differed 180 degrees from our minority report, which asserts that all large healthy oak trees are worthy of consideration, the planning commissioners Roundtree, Reynolds, Turpul, and Nichols believe no oak trees, not even 300 or 400-year-old oak trees should be spared for removal if they happen to grow on single family residential properties. I think there are two major problems with the planning commission recommendation. First, four out of five commissioners have already decided before any future application is submitted to them that no oak tree is worthy of protection if it grows on single family residential property. The second problem is that if Chair Roundtree is sitting on our city council with you next May, Mr. Roundtree's lack of protection for oak trees is guaranteed. With that cautionary observation or two, I support staff's recommendation to you this evening to extend the moratorium until May 2016. We want our city council to restore the oak tree ordinance to exclude the owner planted definition and exemption, but to include no cost permits for pruning, low cost permits for trees causing property damage, and added protection for our valley oak, Quercus lobata. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Chase Rashid, followed by Sharon Markinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks. I've lived here since 1999. What we're debating here is heritage, environmental heritage. Even though you can replant trees in replacement of those that have been cut, you cannot regrow the heritage. Just because we have 55,000 oaks in this city does not mean we should say, oh hey, we got some to spare so we can weaken the oak tree ordinance. We can't do that. And having an owner planted exemption makes no sense to me. That's putting a government standard on science. Government can't dictate science. Government can't make science because science is science. And science says there is no difference between an owner planted tree and a naturally growing tree. You know, leadership is action and it takes action, it's going to take action to restore our oak tree ordinance to its glory. The founders of this city knew what they were doing when they put our oak tree ordinance in place. This is a planned community, let's remember that. And planned communities get to be successful because of strong, strict ordinances to protect environmental heritage. So be a leader and take the action to restore our oak tree ordinance to its previous glory. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chase. Sharon Markinson, followed by Sean Meradian. Hello, Sharon.
Thank you. My name's Sharon Markinson. I'm a resident of Woodland, resident of Woodland Hills, but I am a service provider for the City of Thousand Oaks. And the service I provide is presentations on climate reality. So the timing of this whole discussion is interesting because as we know, we are hearing more and more about the California drought and the warming climate. And we've all known since second grade that our trees are one of our greatest protections against excessive heat, against excessive carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, that they hold water during potential flood seasons. So I would also point out in terms of timing that the city council quite wisely made one of your top priorities right after balancing the budget, environmental protection in the City of Thousand Oaks. So at this crucial moment when citizens are so concerned about the environment and in a place that is historically a model of environmental protection, I urge you to reinstate the historic protections of our oaks. As a resident of Woodland Hills, I want to just real quickly tell you that when I bought my home there 20 years ago, my very wise realtor pointed out to me as we were driving to the home she was going to show me, that if I bought this home, I would be traveling back and forth on a boulevard with mature, beautiful trees. I was sold on the home before I ever saw it, just as so many residents of Thousand Oaks have come to this community for the eponymous trees. My husband and I seriously consider moving now. Not least of the reasons is the fact that they are taking out trees and removing landscape a few miles from our home to build literally miles long mega mall. And when we think of moving, we think of Thousand Oaks. I urge you to maintain your priorities and the greatest asset, Mr. Mayor, of your community, and that's those wonderful oak trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you very much. Sean Meradian, followed by Yvonne Brockwell. Hello, Sean.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council member staff. My name is Sean Meradian. I'm a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks. I am a director of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and I am the chair of the newly formed Landmark Oak Tree Committee that our association formed last week. I'm here before you this evening to just bring your attention to the formation of our committee. We sent correspondence to staff, Mr. Kearns, last week and I'd just like to briefly read that to you and answer any questions that you may have. We write from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association to inform you that we have formed our own landmark oak tree committee, which I will be chairing. Our task would be to gather information from all interested stakeholders and to draft or propose landmark oak tree ordinance that would apply specifically to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area. We're aware of the agenda item this evening. It's before the city council and would offer a suggestion as a matter of efficiency and professional courtesy. In light of the formation of our committee, the importance of this item and the amount of time and work required for our committee to prepare a draft, we would respectfully request that this agenda item be continued until our draft is complete so that it may be considered by the council during the same meeting. If not, we would respectfully request that the specific plan area be excluded from any final vote this evening until councils have the opportunity to review and consider our proposal before rendering a decision which may ultimately need to be revisited. We acknowledge that this is an important issue to us, our members, our community, and therefore we need to give it the time and attention it deserves to get it right. With that said, our committee looks forward to working with key staff members, the community, to put together a comprehensive ordinance which reflects the desires, intent, and vision for the specific plan area. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Yvonne Brockwell, followed by Joan Edwards. Hello, Yvonne.
Hello. My name's Yvonne Brockwell and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. My family moved here in 1975. There's now three generations in my family who reside here in our beautiful city. And like many, we were deeply shocked and heartbroken at the loss of over 170 mature, healthy trees last April. We've learned a lot in this past year. We've come to realize there's been more than a loss of trees and a loosening of ordinances. In the long view, it begins to feel like there's been a concerted effort to remove trees, not only from our urban forest, but from the conscience of our community. We were distressed to realize that questions in regards to the value of our trees have been removed from the city's satisfaction surveys. Also, at one time, the city had an active and ongoing tree committee, which has been disbanded. We also learned that in 2010, a grand jury investigated the city's practices in the tracking of mitigation trees. The grand jury report recommended our city better provide public access to information regarding the removal of trees and to keep records of trees planted. So what's happening here? Our city had a forestry master plan it published in 1989. It was so visionary and comprehensive, it inspired other cities to use it as a prototype. Unfortunately, four years later, our city's leadership shelved the forestry master plan. So here we are, and this is 2015, while cities throughout California, across our nation, and around the world are reevaluating their urban tree canopies. They are compiling inventories. The urban forest has become a prominent tool in stormwater management and recharging groundwater. In addition, it reduces temperatures, air pollution, increases property values, and provides an improved quality of life. Every single mature, healthy tree counts in our urban tree canopy. It is our best defense in this time of extended drought. Now more than ever, we need our city to shift its perception of our trees as obstacles to development. The trees are not the obstacles. They are deeply woven into the fabric of our city's general plan and the overall community. Now more than ever, we need the protections of our natural resources restored. We need to demand ingenuity and creativity in the further development of our city.
Thank you, Yvonne. You have to finish up, please.
Please extend the moratorium so there's ample time to refine our ordinances and address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Joan Edwards, followed by Ed Jones.
Thank you for having us tonight, mayor and city council members. My name is Joan Edwards. I live in the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks. And I want to just start out by saying that every tree matters to me here in this city and that I was so excited to move back here in the 90s and to realize that we're a tree city. This city takes care of its trees until about a year ago, everything changed. So it's not taking care of its trees now and we really do need to extend the moratorium. We need to get rid of the idea of three trees every 10 years. That's way too slippery to slide through that right there. That's really bad. And I just want to mention, I was at a really interesting meeting a couple of weeks ago where one of the senior staff people of the City of Thousand Oaks, he didn't want his name mentioned, of course, said that if it wasn't for our strong oak tree laws that we have here in Thousand Oaks, all of our oak trees by now would be furniture or firewood. And I think he's right. This is the plan that Bill Elmandorf wrote in 1989 that our then city council, led by one of the city council women who happened to also be on the tree committee, that just passed some of the worst ideas I've ever heard. You should all read this. This is a wonderful plan and it has so many, it's just chock full of great ideas and how it's wonderful it is that we have a forestry plan. He called, Bill Elmandorf, what a wonderful man, he called it our community forest program. And this is it. So I ask that you look back at that and try to adopt it. The last thing I want to say is that I hope that the city council will return to the oak tree ordinance the way it existed before owner planted exemptions were permitted. All these terms get so mixed up in people's minds. Owner planted, parking lot trees, owner exempted. If changes are to be made in the ordinance, they should come as no cost permits for pruning, low cost permits for tree causing property damages, and added protection for our native Quercus lobata, our valley oaks, our city's logo after all. We should be preserving that tree.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed Jones, followed by George Hutchison. Hello, Ed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Ed Jones of Thousand Oaks. I served on the Thousand Oaks City Council from 1970 to 74. In my first year, 1970, the original Thousand Oaks Oak Tree Ordinance was adopted. In the opening paragraph of the ordinance, it is stated, quote, "Whereas the City of Thousand Oaks was originally composed of an oak forest, and whereas it is pertinent to the welfare and safety of all the citizens, that oak trees be left in as great numbers as possible to provide for the preservation of the natural beauty which said oak trees lend to the city. It has been determined by the council of said city that proper and necessary steps must be taken to curb the destruction of oak trees for the welfare of the citizens of Thousand Oaks." You see, the earlier developers cut down oak trees willingly to get as many houses as possible on a given piece of ground. The oak forest was being destroyed. Then, the city council in 1970, attempting to reverse that practice, ruled that saving oak trees was necessary for the welfare of the cities. I believe they were right then and that would be correct today. But they did not make it impossible But they did not make it impossible to remove oak trees. If somebody wanted to remove it, if he had a prudent purpose, diseased trees interfering with utility, poles, et cetera, he could get a permit to do so. But the point is that preservation of oak trees was determined to be in the best interests of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Thousand Oaks. In fact, that original ordinance has lasted substantially in the same form until 2010, and it protected ordinances, oak trees, very well here for 40 years. As you know, the changes made to that ordinance in 2010 allowed for the wanton destruction of many lovely and irreplaceable trees in the Westlake Shopping Mall, which triggered the revisions contemplated tonight. But what is the planning commission presented to you to rectify the situation? A proposal that I would term, quote, "The Open Season on Oak Tree Ordinance," a proposal so weak that thousands of oak trees could be cut down in Thousand Oaks in the coming weeks with no justification. All the homeowner would have to do would be to notify the city that he was doing it. In conclusion, it is my recommendation that the planning commission's Open Season on Trees Ordinance, on Oak Trees Ordinance, be rejected, and rather, you should reinstate the original ordinance which served us so well for 40 years.
Ed?
My last sentence.
We got a council member with a question for you.
Yes, Mr., your time is up, but I wanted to know, when the ordinance was established, you were on the city council. How did you come up with the fee schedule?
Well, the fee schedule was very minimal. I mean, the original ordinance was $2. I have no idea why the fees became as high as they became. I think the prudent thing to do would be to have a requirement that you justify taking down the ordinance: a diseased tree, blocking utilities, as you pointed out, disturbing a driveway, other prudent purposes. But make the fee something that is reasonable. What you do when you do that is you have justification for removing an oak tree. What you have now is just, I want to take down three oak trees. I have an oak tree right outside my dining room window that is probably about 200 to 300 years old. It's a joy to the, all my neighbors that get to see it. It's a joy to me when I drive home. I could just, for, I don't know why, but if I wanted to, I could take that down and just notify the city I'm taking it down. I think we need standards. I think we need justification.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker, George Hutchison, followed by Beverly Hammond. Hello, George.
Mayor Adam, councilmembers. George Hutchison, 45-year resident of the Canal Valley, 20-year resident of Braemar Gardens, and reluctant on-and-off board member of that association, currently a board member there. You have the letter from our board, which I stand by. I helped author. Some of the questions that were asked earlier suggest maybe taking a closer look at, or we are sorely out of touch somehow. We have attempted to take out trees under a Type A permit. We are still having trouble determining exactly how much damage must already be done to a driveway, to a drain line, what have you, before we can take the tree out. When arborists clearly identify trees that are going to cause these problems in the future, we have to wait until after substantial damage has been done to take the trees out. I could go on and on, but I'll let the letter, I'll let the letter stand for what it is. I believe every word of what's written in it. I'd like to speak briefly to the ordinance overall. I just struggle with just simply putting numbers on a tree ordinance. You know, you could have a person with one tree in the front yard, or two at the curb in the front house, and one in the back that were carefully planted. You could have situations in single-family residents that are a little bit like our homeowners' association, where little consideration was placed on the numbers or the locations where they're planted. They're two completely separate issues. And how you just simply assign a number to them and say, "Somebody can take out three," makes no sense to me. I love the trees. I picked Braemar Garden because of the oak trees there. I picked this community largely because of the oak trees. I love them, that you just have to use common sense in where they, where they are placed. In some cases, it precludes reasonable use of the yard. Lastly, on homeowners' association, one size doesn't fit all. I think the committee was looking at general homeowners' associations with common areas, Foxmoor and Westlake, versus condominiumized ones where, for example, in our situation, a homeowner is responsible for the landscaping and the oak trees in his backyard. It's on our common area, but we, as an association, have no right to touch that tree. On the other hand, we're responsible for the 100 oak trees, other oak trees in the front yards, and that owner has no right to touch those trees other than us. So in the case of our homeowners' association, which applies to who? The oak tree in the backyard is on common area, but it's exclusive use, and that homeowner is responsible for maintaining it. Where does that ordinance deal with that? I don't know.
We got to wrap up, George.
There's a lot of complexities in homeowners' associations, and I think you ought to look more at them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. All right. Beverly Hammond, followed by Melanie Beck. Hi, Beverly.
Hi, I'm Beverly Hammond, and I'm a resident in the city of Thousand Oaks, North Ranch, and also a resident of Braemar Gardens. I wanted to show you a graphic of Braemar Gardens, and on this you'll see that the area marked in yellow is essentially the perimeter of our townhome, our duplex condominium development. Our development was built out 25 years ago, and at that time, the developer came to the city of Thousand Oaks and requested that there be a city-approved landscape plan. The city of Thousand Oaks did approve that plan, and unfortunately, that plan called for many oak trees, of course, only about this high at the time, to be planted within the median, which is only four feet wide between the driveways and so forth. At this time, those oak trees are overgrown, and they're causing lifting in the driveways as well as problems with the maintenance and the drainage as well. I'd like to say to the city council today, tonight, that, in essence, your tree plan has not made any applicable contingency for organizations such as ours, the multiple-family developments. But you're, in essence, discriminating against the multiple-family townhome communities. We are a different class of residents, and currently, your ordinance does not even deal with our type of use at all, so you need to address that. Secondly, you are increasing our own liability as a homeowners' organization due to your, due to the increase in unsafe conditions on our properties. And lastly, you are causing damage to our property values by interfering with our own maintenance and improvements in our, in our community. So we need you to address some of these issues with regard to our type of community, and we urge that you take that into consideration. None of our applications are for heritage oaks at all. They are all for developer-planted properties.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melanie Beck, followed by Bonnie Clarfield Bylin. Hello, Melanie.
Hello. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Melanie Beck, and I'm a Thousand Oaks resident. Tonight, I wish to ask the Thousand Oaks Council to return to the original ordinance and to support the proposed moratorium. The way the oak ordinance has been changed is basically a guarantee that we won't have large oak trees into the future, except maybe on parkland. The current administrative process for individual homeowners to remove a tree provides no pause for thought on why you're removing the tree, or any room for thinking about what you could do to keep the tree. And a permitting system helps people to exercise that self-discipline against their individual desires. I have two neighbors, one on either side. One had a young teenage tree, about 30 years old, that came up from an acorn. I verified this with the previous owner's daughter. The owner at the time just thought, "I'll let it grow. Is that indigenous or not?" The tree's gone, and I was shocked. I couldn't even open my blind for several nights, days, and there's cars all over the place now. The other has a heritage-sized oak tree. They love the tree, and there's a big arm limb leaning over the house. They're worried about the cost of the permits, and they asked me, "What would I do?" I suggested some free people to come look at it, and I think that that needs to be made more affordable. So in the media, you often hear about leafy Thousand Oaks, and I would like to keep it leafy, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Melanie. Bonnie Clarfield Bylin, followed by Dr. Gail Bianquino.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Clarfield Bylin, and I live in Thousand Oaks, and I was one of the community members of the ad hoc committee. And I want to start with a quote from the letters of William Blake. "The tree which moves the sum to tears of joy is in the eyes of others only a green thing that stands in the way. Some see nature all ridicule and deformity, and some scarce see nature at all. But to the eyes of the man of imagination, nature is imagination itself." Which brings me to why I moved, my, my family moved to Thousand Oaks in 1996. It was due to the quality of life it promised, including our ridge-top protection, excellent parks and open space, and a wonderful library, and most importantly, our strong oak tree preservation. I gave everyone a document, I believe you should all have, "The Oak Tree Preservation in Thousand Oaks, California," by William Elmandorf, and I'm just going to read the abstract from it. This was written in 1991. "The city of Thousand Oaks, over the last 20 years, has taken aggressive steps to preserve and protect the city's namesake, the oak tree. First adopted in 1972 as an emergency city council proclamation, the city's oak tree ordinance has been considered by some to be one of the first and toughest municipal native tree preservation ordinances within the state of California. The current oak tree ordinance has undergone 20 years of review and input, and has shown to be successful in tree preservation, as well as maintaining and increasing community character, quality of development, community image, and the quality of life within the city of Thousand Oaks. Somewhere along the way, this tree protection has eroded. Figuratively speaking, I believe the axe hit the tree when the unlimited owner-planted exemptions were approved on the oak tree ordinance change in 2010. I was on the oak tree ad hoc committee, and I regret my decision. I approved the three trees, and if I had to do it over, I wouldn't. I would like to see our city council return to the oak tree ordinance to the way it existed before owner-planted exemptions were permitted. If changes are to be made to the ordinance, they should occur in the form of no-cost permits for pruning, low-cost permits for trees causing property damage, and added protection for our native valley oak, the Quercus lobata."
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you very much. Dr. Gail Bianquino, followed by Anne Laffianza.
Good evening to all. My name is Gail Bianquino, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 30-some-odd years, and I'm lucky enough to live on a piece of property that has 58 full-grown oak trees on it, of all varieties, plus a few hundred baby ones scattered around. I love these trees, and I think those young people who sung tonight for us were very inspiring because it is a very small world, and I think we're responsible for taking care of the heritage of what our forefathers have left us. And I really, really disapprove of any oak tree being taken out unless there is positive good cause with criteria that is set out and everyone understands. There should be permits. There should be, like, if you want to build a house, you have to post that on the street if you want to add a room. I think that would be appropriate for oak tree removal, or even pruning, to a greater extent. I don't really believe that any of us here are as old as some of the oak trees on my property. You would have to live three times, if you're in your 60s, to be as old as my oak trees, and I believe that they deserve our care. They deserve our preservation. If we're going to change anything, change the things that make sense, which would be no-cost permits for pruning, so people are able to take care of their property responsibly, to have low-cost permits for damaged property because of the oak trees, and to, above all, protect our valley oaks. Thank you, and I agree with every other one of my colleagues, because I was on that committee, too.
Thank you, Gail. Anne Laffianza, followed by Marilyn Carpenter. Hello, Anne.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anne Laffianza, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I was the vice chair on the committee of the ad hoc oak and landmark tree committee. Like many others throughout our community, I think that it is vitally important for us to do all we can to protect our trees. They enhance the quality of life that we share here, and as we all know, they are a great part of our economic growth and prosperity. I also wanted to say that my experience on the committee has shown me that this is quite a complex issue. I believe that we could have served this community, and quite frankly, you as a council, much more effectively if we would have been able to go a bit beyond the cut-and-dried purview of our scope. For example, there were many of us who were interested in exploring fee structures for trimming and removal permits. I also think that taking the time to have discussed the needs of individual homeowners and their issues with the oak tree roots, rather than giving an arbitrary number of trees one can remove over an arbitrary timeframe, would have also been really useful. These numbers were not based on environmental science or economics. When I started on this community, I was completely unaware of the complicated nuances that make up this critically important issue. Due to the nature of the structure of the committee, we were unable to work through them in the kind of holistic, thoughtful manner that is called for. I hope that you and your staff will allow the time for this to occur. I would strongly encourage you to extend the moratorium. This issue is too important to not get it right. Unfortunately, once a tree is gone, it is gone. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and for allowing me to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Marilyn Carpenter, followed by Judy Lazar.
Good evening.
Hi, Marilyn.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Carpenter, live in Thousand Oaks, over 50 years now, part of the original oak tree ordinance construction, involved in the discussions about how we would preserve our heritage here. Frankly, I have very little to add to the eloquent statements that most folks have given to you. I think they've made it so abundantly clear that our oaks are our heritage, our oaks are our namesake. We had a contest way back about what we should name our community, believe it or not. There were some who suggested that maybe it should be something other than Thousand Oaks, but because our oaks are so much a part of what we are, obviously, Thousand Oaks won hands-down. I think, for me, there's been a lesson, and it's that old saw about the price of liberty is eternal vigilance. I was asleep at the switch when the oak tree ordinance was changed. I was stunned to learn that it had been weakened as it was. And very honestly, I think your best option is to go back to the original oak tree protection ordinance. It served us well, and without it, we're going to lose those things which make us so special, so can't add any more than that. I did want to say, I do have one other little aside. It came to my attention, I was privileged to learn a little bit more about what's going on with oak trees in town, and I learned that as the city is planting trees, we're not actually planting lobadas and Quercus agrofolia, which are our native oaks. We're planting species that are not native to this area, and I would urge you to take a look at that policy. I think if we allow these old trees to be taken out, and all that we have planted are trees that are non-native, then we're really going to change the nature of the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Marilyn. Former mayor, I should say, Judy Lazar, followed by...
Not the only one.
No, we've got a few tonight. Followed by Hans Dorr.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm probably going to sound like the odd chime here. I, too, was on this committee, and it sounds like it was a terrible thing. We had a difference of opinion. There was no difference of opinion about the value of oak trees. All of us valued the oak trees that this city is named for. I'd like to say the same thing I said at the planning commission at one point. All the members of the committee felt strongly that the city should encourage the judicious planting of oak trees. The two experts, the... The two experts, the oak tree experts on the committee, agreed, but they also felt that in order for that to happen, there needs to be respect for the rights of property owners to utilize their own property. After all, if I told you that if you planted an oak tree, I could refuse to let you take it down, you probably would never plant the oak tree. So I think the city needs to use the same kind of judiciousness in dealing with homeowners. Most, you know, this furor over the removal of the oak trees in Westlake was because there were so many trees removed. During the same time that those were removed, homeowners removed fewer than 200 oak trees. There was no problem. Nobody complained, nobody shouted, there was nothing. They were property owners who removed trees on their property, as you would remove a pine tree that got too big or had a problem. I think there's a reasonable way to deal with this. The committee recommended three owner-planted oak trees. You can deal with as many number as you want, but I think it should be restricted to owner-planted oak trees. I don't think any of us would want to see native oaks removed. That ordinance has served the city well. Use your common sense. I think the committee did a good job.
Thank you, Judy. Hans Dorr, followed by Joe Santoro.
Mr. Mayor, staff, and of course, city council members, my name is Hans Dorr, and I live in Westlake Village. I'm a little bit confused, to tell you the truth, because I'm looking some scribbled notes here. I like to talk about the inconsistencies of what is happening with our trees. I live right across Triumph Park, and I look out, and every year, two trees come down. I talk to the people, I say, where's the tree coming down? Oh, it's interfering with our sprinkler line. I beg your pardon, you spent how much money for taking a tree down versus rerouting a one-inch sprinkler line? Now, what interest is being served here, I don't understand. Now, I live under an oak tree that has quadrupled in size in this past almost 30 years that I have lived underneath. When I bought it, I didn't know oak trees can grow that fast and that big. My bedroom, my children's bedroom is underneath the oak trees, 80% covered with oak trees. The branches are humongous. When the property was subdivided, and they decided the city allowed them to build houses underneath, they cut huge branches off to squeeze in a house. Then the city said, oh, we want to take care of the, or take the responsibility of the tree, your homeowners association will do that. Mr. Fentry, at that time, sent us a letter that, oh, we will no longer take care of your oak tree, you have to make sure it is trimmed and everything else. The oak trees, and my neighbor's yard, I had people from the city come out, and they said, yeah, I can see your tile tiles are being broken and knocked off, but there's nothing I can do. Well, maybe if I come out and watch the tree trimmer, when he takes some of the little twigs out, but you've got to order somebody to come in and inspect the tree and pay the, whatever it is, $400. Now, why is it my responsibility for another neighbor's tree that hangs over my house that the city let somebody build a house on, under? And I'm stuck, I'm on social security, and I don't know if getting these fees for three trees or 10 trees, is it a new vehicle of raising city taxes or money? I don't understand it. The city should help the homeowners that have a tree, they should have expert people that come out and say, we will help you, this is what needs to be done.
Thank you, Hans.
That is missing in this city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe Santoro, followed by Matt Coletta.
Good evening. My name is Joe Santoro, I live at Braemar Gardens Townhomes. I happen to be on the board and was asked to speak as their representative tonight, not just on my own behalf. I'd like to show you a picture, so you see what happens when you plant an oak tree. There's the... The before and after, 25 years ago when the tree was planted. Looks beautiful now, but our problem is safety and liability and damage to our property, and that's what we'd like to get control over. If a homeowner can remove three trees on their property, and maybe he has a quarter of an acre of land, and we have front yards that are 20 by 20 and have oak trees this size, but we're not allowed to remove the trees because we're not a single-family residence, there's inconsistency in that regulation, and who can do what to an oak tree? We also have oak trees completely enshrouding streetlights. We have four streetlights on our entire property, two of them completely enshrouded by oak We have driveways being destroyed. Last year, I put in an application to have six trees removed, because they're planted in these medians that are not four feet wide, but only three feet wide. The cost to repair the driveways, not replace them, just two sections, was $10,000 between those two driveways. If your driveway looked like that, having to be shaved down over and over again, which is probably not even ADA compliant, and the response we got from the city was, it's not causing enough damage yet. What do we have to wait for? Also, they said, in this case, you can file a D permit. A D permit is $4,000. And we, and because Type A, you can remove dead, diseased, hazardous, or causing damage, but not if you're under a master landscape plan, which we are. There needs to be some accommodation made for homeowners of situations like this, and I appreciate your consideration on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We do have a question for you. Councilmember Bill de Penya.
Good evening. Thank you for your comments, we appreciate them. When I saw the pictures, did you take pruning the oak trees into consideration so that the light could be seen?
Well, that's another issue that we have problems with, because three years ago, we were granted one of those long-term permit maintenance agreements by the city. Last October 14th, I paid the $500 deposit that was required, so it's not once you have one of those, you don't have to pay any more fees. There are more fees, and it took until just, I think, two weeks ago before the city would approve our pruning the trees with all the little branches under two inches. And we had to go out and get an Arbus report to say which trees we were trimming, how much we were going to trim them, and then they want to come out and inspect afterwards. It's not easy, this long-term maintenance contract.
And the tree in front of...
Yes, we will give consideration to trimming. Like I said, the only thing we want to remove is dead, dying, diseased, hazardous trees, or ones that are causing damage to our property. And right now, we're sustaining this damage, and the city says, it's not enough damage.
The tree in front of your house that was planted, where you showed us a before and after, is that a lobada, quercus, or Valley oak?
That one's not directly in front of my house, that's in front of someone else's home. I'm not sure what the species is.
And that one looked like it could be pruned as well. Do you know if the pruning permit was attempted?
On the ones around...
Looks like a lobada to me, but I'm not sure.
Well, we will prune wherever we can. We love the oak trees, but if it's going to be lifting a driveway, getting into drain lines, we as a board have a fiduciary responsibility to our homeowners to protect their property.
All right.
And as you can see, we've shaved driveways down to eliminate it. In your packet, there's also a picture of a tree, a driveway, that was lifted so significantly against the homeowner's garage door, it wouldn't flip up anymore. We don't want to wait till the conditions get like that. We need some sort of a provision that's cost-effective and will expeditiously allow us to remove trees that are causing damage, and not have to wait six months or a year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Matt Coletta, followed by Patricia Booker.
Good evening. My name is Matt Coletta. I've lived in Thousand Oaks since 1978. I enjoy the oak trees as well. I'm going to echo some of the comments that were made here. I live in the same community. These trees are beautiful, but they are causing issues liability-wise and excess cost to the homeowners association. It forces our dues to go up, and it forces potential liability for the association, and this is a problem. You heard some of the comments here, you have the packet, you see the photos. As far as pruning, of course, the homeowners association and the group here would prune whatever trees are able to be pruned, but I think that would be putting a Band-Aid on the problem. There are certain trees here, I happen to have a oak tree in between my driveway and my neighbor's driveway. The area between the two driveways is about that wide. This tree, one of the photos that you saw here was a, when the tree was initially planted, it was about that size. It is now a very large tree lifting the driveway. My daughter had a friend over recently, she tripped on it. I happened to contact my insurance carrier to ask, what is my liability? And they had notified me that I should put in writing a letter to the homeowners association, notifying them of this issue, to relieve me from the liability that could potentially take place here. So you have the photos, and I would just echo some of the same, you know, comments here that were made regarding this particular association. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And our last speaker is Patricia Booker.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First of all, mayor, I would like to thank you for making the public feel welcome, you do an excellent job at that, so I want to applaud you for that. And people take the trees for granted, because I know I did, until the trees were cut down at Westlake Plaza, because I used to ride the bus around there, there was a bus stop there, the trees provided shade, you know, you could sit on the grass, rest your back against the truck of the trees. You know, people take trees for granted, and yes, there are 50,000-plus oak trees in Thousand Oaks. People say, well, they're not all going to just be chopped down and there will be no more oak trees, but we're talking about the present. There will be a future. After we're all gone, there are future communities to come in Thousand Oaks, and they will get down to less than 1,000 trees. It's just, something is not done, and I think most people are concerned about developers and homeowners that come in and buy homes where the trees are already there. That's the problem, that's where the problem lies, and you can't just, I don't want this tree here because I want a pool. There should be something placed in the ordinance that says, you know, be aware that you might not be able to cut down an oak tree to put in a pool, or do, you know, improvements to your home. You need to buy a home where there are not a lot of trees, or no trees at all. And I'd like to say one last thing. I attended the final meeting of the Tree Ad-Hoc Committee, and I don't know what committee member suggested it, but he did suggest that one oak tree a year be designated a landmark. And there are oak trees on Thousand Oaks Boulevard that are some of the real old, you know, original oak trees that should be designated that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. All right, that does conclude our speakers for this evening. I have three written statement cards, which we'll also add to the record. And I will go back to Mr. Kearns and Mr. Prescott as well, for any responses you might have to the comments this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Adam. Just a few comments. One regarding the Braemar situation. Staff has met with the representatives of Braemar Homewards Association, and we've discussed options and alternatives for them. They do have a substantial problem out there. There's a problem with the size of the planter, versus how big the trees have gotten to this point, and we've suggested, as Mr. Santoro mentioned, going through what's called a Type B, or Type D, as in David permit, which would require Planning Commission consideration, but they could do a comprehensive landscape plan change for their development area, so they can suggest trees for those plant areas that are more appropriate, at the same time removing the existing trees. That is one way to alleviate it. I think from talking to them over time, that the permit process is more of a hindrance for them. It's a cost that they do not want to go through because of the existing situation, they need to alleviate their problems, as the last speaker from Braemar mentioned, there's some liability concerns. In response, Ms. Brockwell mentioned that four years ago, the forestry master plan was shelved. That is not the case, it was not shelved, the forestry master plan is in place, and it's actually contemplated for evaluation as we speak. And the last comment I feel I need to make is that the exemption process is not equivalent to a removal permit. The exemption process exempts the tree from the oak tree ordinance protection standards. That gives the homeowner the right to do what they like to that tree at any time. So on one side of the spectrum, that could be just minor encroachment, putting a walkway or minor pruning activity to maintain the tree. On the other side, it could result in removal of the tree. It just eliminates the city from having any jurisdiction over that tree. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill de Penya.
Mr. Kearns, maybe it's a question from Mr. Wilson. Right now, we allow the removal of any oak tree, as long as it's not bigger than two inches in diameter, correct? Without permits, without anything?
The oak trees that are less than two inches diameter, as measured, are four and a half feet above the grade. They are exempt from the oak tree ordinance protection standards.
Four and a half feet above grade?
Right.
How old is a tree that is two inches in diameter, four and a half feet above ground?
The size of a tree, if you're looking at container size, I don't know, I couldn't really give you an age on the growing time. I do have a picture of a two-inch diameter tree, if that would help.
Would Mr. Wilson know?
Thank you, that's actually a really good question. It's going to depend on the amount of water that the tree is receiving while it's growing. So if it's grown in a container, it's going to be receiving a fair amount of water, because usually when container-grown stock is out of nursery, so they're providing not only water, but a lot of times fertilizer. So a container-grown tree can actually grow fairly quickly. You can, a Quercus lobata, up to a foot, a foot and a half a year. The diameter of the trunk can actually thicken up much faster. If it's a naturally germinated oak tree, that's, it's grown in an indigenous environment, such as a mountainside or down in a creek, it's all going to depend on the water, and if water is restricted, it's going to grow very, very slow. I know that there was some comments made earlier about large trees being very old trees, that's actually not necessarily true. It's going to depend on the amount of water that the tree is receiving. So some of the indigenous trees that are able to tap into natural springs can actually get very quick, can grow very large in a relatively short amount of time, maybe perhaps several hundred years, whereas there are trees that are much smaller that can be five, 600 years old, and so it does depend on the amount of water. Lobadas typically, one foot of growth a year. Agrofolias, it can be as much as two to three feet of growth a year.
So on average, a two-inch tree lobata could be about five years older or less?
I would estimate that the tree that we planted out in front of City Hall, the golden oak anniversary tree, that was probably between three to four inches in diameter, and that tree is approximately 15 years old, so...
15.
15. So a two-inch diameter tree, it would be, it would be fair to say that it could be 10 years old.
10. All right. Thank you.
All right.
The other question I have is, when was the fee schedule established? It wasn't in 1972.
No, no, the current fee schedule was established in 2013.
No, we started charging for permits before 2013. So when did we start charging for permits?
For oak tree permits?
Yes, oak tree permits.
Well, the original ordinance established a $2 fee, so that's when we started charging, and then over the years, the fees have been adjusted.
Adjusted based on?
Actual cost of processing, and in the cases of permits at individual, single-family homes, the city council has, over the years, chosen not to go for full-cost recovery.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and we're going to throw this open to council discussion. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't you kick it off?
Just a couple of observations.
Just a couple of observations. First, want to thank the members of the committee. You know, this was one of those difficult committees where I think a couple of speakers acknowledged that, you know, you just had a good old-fashioned, different perspective. And you had a wide variety, in terms of diversity, of people on the committee. So you dealt with a difficult issue. We have some good information that has been brought back to the council, to the Planning Commission. And really, that's really how the process should work. I'm always concerned when everybody agrees on everything and it's one big yes, that's where we, it's the diversity and the difference of opinion, I think strengthens it. And certainly, as I read the report, the information that we got, in particular from the committee, was very, very useful. Having said that, in terms of opening comments, my own view is, looking back in 2010, I think it's forgotten, I'm certain, the committee was advised of this. In 2010, the city was reacting to requests, in large part, from homeowners. They were folks, just like you, that came to the city, that had residential properties, where after, now it's 2015, 50 years as a city, as you've heard from testimony tonight, trees that were originally planted, either by them or the previous property owner, after 50 years, were causing problems on their property. That's a big deal. We've heard testimony tonight from folks that said, hey, this is, this is not a small matter. And as a matter of fact, you, the city, you don't make it very particularly easy to deal with these issues. We were reacting to that public testimony. And so, while we may not have got it exactly perfect, that was the, that was the outcome of 2010. And that was, you know, pretty much looked at by the council in our entirety, that we were looking at trying to address issues that came forward. I think the comments and certainly the observation that prior to 2010, we had a very good ordinance that has served the city extremely well. I'm not going to make a motion tonight, but I'd like the council to consider a couple of things. First, I think because of procedural issues, we can't, for example, say, let's just go back to the 2010 ordinance. I'm going to have the city attorney address that, but.
That would be correct. The issue before you are specifically for the exemption under 5-14.05, 5-14.06, and 5-24.05.
All right. So, you know, I'll be interested here what the council says, and then we need to be guided by staff. But from my perspective, I think we need to get to a place that does a couple of things. First, we go back to the 2010 ordinance. It did serve the city very well. And we have to recognize that we are 50 years old. We have to recognize that, and we need to build in some type of reasonable accommodation for folks that have trees on their property that have become either hazardous or nuisance or whatever it may be. I think we've had good testimony tonight of that. Number two, we have to do something with homeowners associations. There's no question that treating homeowners associations different than a residential property is problematic. And we don't have an answer to that tonight. And I would suggest to the council, we will be here till early morning, trying to reconcile these issues. I think we need to send that back to staff, and they need to clean this up. So they bring something back to us that, that you can basically, and, you know, somewhat cogently, put out in two minutes, and everybody understands exactly what the ordinance is. So I think that needs to be cleaned up. Number three, I think the Valley Oaks, and contrary to some of the comments, it is not simply you can just cut down a Valley Oak if it's on your property. That was a complete misstatement. That's not accurate. It's never been the case, and it's not accurate today, and it wasn't accurate in 2010. That being said, I think we need to either go back to the 2010 ordinance, or put clear, very clear guidelines that the Valley Oaks, the 200, 300-year-old trees, whether it's on your property or, you know, in terms of a residential or not, there needs to be a very, very high standard for messing with those trees. And the fact of the matter is, I think, because they're several hundred years old, common sense tell you whoever bought the property, they bought the property with that tree, and they're going to have to live with it, as far as I'm concerned, unless there is a clear safety hazard, which of course, that's going to trump, you know, whatever permit process we have. I think the comments with respect to no or low-cost permits, as they relate to pruning or dealing with problem trees, makes a lot of sense. I'd like to see staff clean that up and bring that back as well. Let me just, give me your patience for a moment. So I'm not making a motion tonight, but in talking to the city attorney, I think it's maybe problematic to bifurcate this issue. It seems to me that in terms of the commercial properties, that one was pretty much laid out. I think that's pretty much straightforward. I think the residential properties are still problematic. My original thought was that we would bifurcate it, we'd deal with the commercial, send the residential back. It's my understanding from the city attorney, we're not allowed to do that. So, you know, I'm going to ask the city attorney, Mr. Mayor, if he could give the council some guidance to simply impose the moratorium tonight, if council's in agreement that we do need to clean this up. Stop everything, send it to staff, have them give us a cleaned ordinance, taking comments from the council, comments from the committee, comments from the commission, and do this right. But I'm just going to share with the council, having read the staff report twice, I'm not clear that we could work our way through this and reach some type of ordinance that makes a lot of sense. And I certainly believe that staff can clean a lot of this up and clarify some of the unanswered questions. So that's, those are my thoughts. I think we need to protect the Valley Oaks at all costs. I think we need to reduce or eliminate some of the costs in terms of taking care of problematic trees. We have to take into consideration homeowner association issues and treat them in some reasonable fashion, as we do residential properties. And we need to have some reasonable combination for properties, residential properties in particular, that did plant trees, that are now 50 years old and may, in fact, be causing problems on their property, with the exception of the Valley Oak. Those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. We'll get to Mr. Heer in just a moment. Councilmember Bill Lepenya, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Fox, when you say we need to revert to the 2010 ordinance, that is the ordinance that was approved for one, you and I were on opposite sides, is, do you mean to say you want to revert to the ordinance that allows for owner-planted exemptions?
Well.
Or to the ordinance prior to 2010?
Prior to 2010. Thanks for that clarification.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Price, go ahead.
Yeah, I too, in reading this, have a lot of, a lot of concerns. And there's some questions that I have, and, you know, thinking about some of the homes up in the North Ranch area and driving up Falling Star there, and I can think of one particular house that, their entire front yard is an oak tree. It's a beautiful oak tree and a beautiful home. And allowing a homeowner to get an exemption on that tree, now, we've heard from staff that exemption does not necessarily mean removal. It could mean pruning. It could mean encroaching. But I think we need to, for our purposes here, we need to assume the worst, and that would be removal. So that somebody could go, a homeowner could go to the staff, file for that exemption free of charge, and then at some point, remove that tree? I would not feel comfortable allowing that to happen. I also understand that during the discussions that took place on the ad hoc committee, or during the ad hoc committee meetings, that there, there may have been some, some talk about the size of trees, but that, that it went away quickly, that they moved in a different direction. And I wonder whether staff might have some thoughts on whether that would be a criteria that we might use when issuing certain permits. I completely agree with Councilmember Fox that we need to establish something that makes it easier for these HOAs to deal with the city. I know that, I think Mr. Sontoro has been down here before, talking about this issue, just in public comment. And I know it was quite some time ago, and apparently that situation has not been resolved. So I think we owe it to them to get that figured out as well. I also have some questions about, and again, for those of you who've been following this, and I know it's most of you in the room, or you wouldn't still be here, you'll recall that when we decided that we were going to form an ad hoc committee, I was very concerned that the private property owners' interests be a part of that discussion, so that we could do it once and get it right. I remain concerned about that. And I have a question, I guess, for the city attorney, and that deals with the private property owners' rights with respect to reasonable use of their property. And I know from experience that there are perhaps not examples involving trees and the denial by the city to remove a tree, but other situations where the city has denied a property owner, say, for instance, to develop a certain site. I know that the city has, in some cases, lost in court. And I want to make sure that we have an ordinance that we can, we can live with, and one that is legally defensible. So I think there was a question in there somewhere, Mr. Heer, and if you think you can get it out of there and answer it, I would appreciate hearing your response. I think you know what the question is. We had a little bit of a discussion about this earlier, so.
I want councilmembers to speak first, and then we'll go to Mr. Heer. Councilmember Bill Lepenya, go ahead.
I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I actually had several other questions, so, thank you. The, the Braemar Homes, Braemar Gardens HOA is different from probably most HOAs in the city, and that was made very clear. I don't know of any HOAs, and I'm a member of an HOA which has as many problems with tree removal, oak tree removal, as you do. So I'm not sure whether the fact that the HOA is liable or responsible for many of the oak trees, I'm not sure if I understand whether you can transfer some of the responsibility and liability to the individual homeowners, and your HOA will legally not allow to do that? Okay. That is, I'm not supposed to ask you any questions, but I thought maybe your CCNRs could be changed as a result to transfer liability or responsibility. Of course, I think that most HOAs rely on the individual homeowners and property owners to deal with oak trees. Braemar Homes seems to be an exception, and perhaps they can be dealt with separately. I believe that the idea, for example, of a comprehensive landscaping plan that is once and for all, that would take care of maintenance, is something that should be taken into consideration, as well as the best management practice for trees, that we need to look at all those things. In particular, as was already mentioned, the Valley, the Valley Oak, the corcus lobata, which is something that definitely should require added protection. So the question I had basically indirectly was for the Braemar HOA, but I wanted to hear what the city attorney will have to say then.
All right, thank you. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Heer. I can definitely emphasize, empathize with the problems at the HOA, the cost and the expediency that you mentioned. I know you like the Oaks, but there are some problems. So it's really, to me, for you, it's more of an issue of the cost and the expediency of solving these problems. And I would be perfectly willing to have staff evaluate that and come back to us with some recommendations. However, I don't feel that's what's really on the agenda tonight. But I'm glad you came here to tell us about it. We do have some things that we can decide tonight. Number one, we can decide whether to extend the moratorium. We're being asked to do that, because if we make other decisions, the moratorium would overlap and we wouldn't have enough time. So that's something we can decide. Number two, the Westlake trees were removed under a law that said the community development department had the discretion to remove as many parking lot trees as they deemed necessary. The ad hoc committee that we requested to be put together has recommended something a little different. They've said that these parking lot trees should be allowed to be removed by the community development department, up to three trees, up to three oaks, and up to five landmark trees. Anything beyond that goes to the planning commission. We can, we can decide on that tonight, I believe. We can decide on that tonight. We can. All right. Number, number two, we had a committee that we appointed probably almost a year ago that's made a few other recommendations as well. Well, let's start with the planning commission. Their recommendation to us was to eliminate the owner-planted exemption altogether, and not distinguish between owner-planted trees and indigenous trees. All oaks are the same. And they've suggested to us that we allow three trees, any oak trees, to be taken out over a 10-year period. Now, it seems to me that we can either agree or reject that argument tonight. We had an ad hoc committee put together with 11 members of the community, was well-advertised, and I think it was well-represented. The business community was invited to join, HOAs were invited to join, private individuals were invited to join. They did a lot of work. They made a recommendation to us as well about trees. They said, maintain the owner-planted exemption and limit it to three trees. A little difference with the law that we have now, because the owner-planted exemption now states any number of trees can be taken out. So the ad hoc committee, the majority of the ad hoc committee, recommended to limit the owner-planted exemption to three trees. And there's a third approach that could be taken, where the owner-planted exemption, much as the planning commission suggested, the owner-planted exemption be done away with, and we basically revert back to the two-inch rule, I'll call it. The two-inch rule meaning that any oak tree up to two inches can be taken out. Anything beyond that requires a permit. And again, you've heard staff say repeatedly, dangerous trees, hazardous trees, trees that are hurting property, there are processes for that tree to be removed. So I think there are things that we can decide tonight. And I'm just trying to lay it out as to what it looks like to me those decisions would be.
Well, let me, you want me to give it a shot here?
Do you want to go to Mr. Heer now, or, well, no, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Okay, let's hear from Patrick first, and then I'll, I don't know that we're going to be in agreement on everything, but I certainly think there's some common ground to start with, and we'll work our way through it.
There you go.
Yeah.
Mr. Heer, finally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. First, I'd like to take Mr. Price's question first, just because I like to do the reverse order of that. Mr. Price was talking about reasonable use of property and those concerns. Whenever you draft an ordinance, whether it's for state or for local agencies, you're always concerned about crafting it in a way that ensures that a person for their property has a reasonable right of their use, a reasonable way to use their property. There are cases, for example, not necessarily in the city, but there are cases in which you have an example of a city council that denies and denies and denies multiple times a person's effort to develop a property or to do something on their property. And no matter what the project is, they're denying it, they're denying it. And that person has obviously a claim to say, they're not even allowing me to use my property. This is my property. And so you have that concern. Another example would be, for example, of view shed, where a city, such as maybe San Francisco or Tiburon, for example, up north, they create an ordinance for view shed, and then after that date, if you plant a tree that grows to a certain height and it blocks someone else's view shed, after that ordinance has been passed, that could be something that they would be able to say, you have to chop down or trim your trees to a certain height. Again, that's an example of, you know, the person might claim, well, I have a reasonable right to use my property with a tree, but because that ordinance is there, that is something that is appropriate. I believe that our ordinance, as we go along, are always defensible, to the greatest extent we attempt that. In this case, there are a lot of questions right now, so I would be hesitant about, just with the, with the discussion tonight, obviously about trying to craft something for 15, or 5-14.05. So with that, I want to go to the main part of tonight. And the mayor brought up the planning commission meeting. I was in attendance at that meeting as well. And they did, at the end... And they did, at the end, break it down into two points. The exemptions is one issue, and that's what's before us tonight, and the commercial use for parking lot trees. The concern we have tonight, though, it's a little different, is that we also have the moratorium. Now, it's clear that no matter what we pass tonight, if there's anything passed, we have to do the moratorium because of the time. The concern I have with the moratorium, the way it's worded, is that it's incorporating both, all the different issues that you have before you, both sections that we've discussed, including also a definition that would become moot if you change 5-14.05. So one of the concerns I have right off the bat is that the moratorium, we'd have to, if you wanted to break it up, you'd have to change the moratorium wording to ensure you're not deleting or prohibiting a portion that you are going to approve at this point. Let me give you the caution I have at this point. From what I heard, there was concerns about having staff go back to do a review of the entire ordinance. I would caution about trying to pass one tonight and then not pass another one, if that's, again, your intent, with the idea that you're going to come back with staff and have them come back with a plan for a whole ordinance revamp, if that's what your plans are tonight, if that's what your direction is tonight. Because then we're looking at, again, piecemealing it. There also is a comment that Mr. Fox made regarding the effort to just go back and try to create something tonight. Again, we cannot do that in the sense of the agenda was very specific of what's on the agenda tonight for these two sections, specifically 5-14.05, 5-14.06, and frankly, 5-24.05. So at this point, my recommendation is if you want to change the one, just to understand that it would be to allow three or less trees in the parking lot to be approved administratively, and that could be any tree on that parking lot. If you're concerned about revamping the entire ordinance to have it looked at by staff and with the direction that's given tonight, then my recommendation would be to pass the moratorium as written, and then come back with an entire revamping of the oak tree ordinance, if that's your direction. So that would be my recommendation at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Mr. Fox?
All right. So if I heard you, and Mr. Heer, if I start going down a path here that's going to be problematic in terms of procedure, just start waving your hand. So my first motion is that we continue the moratorium, okay? That is in place per the staff recommendation. We good so far?
Correct, unless you're going to make any other changes.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we don't do some things, but that we would extend the moratorium as outlined in staff recommendation number two.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bill Lepenya.
We're asked to extend the moratorium because of that two-day gap, correct?
Yeah.
Well, the moratorium, the way the moratorium is written at this time, is that if you extend it, you extend it for the year. That's the time period that you extend it to.
Okay.
If you adopt an ordinance in the interim, before that year ends, then the moratorium ends.
Okay, that's what's a clarification that I need. Thank you.
So that would be really B. Well, it's A and B, because it addresses both.
Can we vote on that separately, just right now?
That's why I said recommendation number two.
Okay. Again, my caution to you is that if you want to adopt the moratorium as written, it doesn't, it would not allow us without dissecting that moratorium as written, including the heading, for the second part, if you want to carve out something and approve it tonight. So if you adopt the moratorium, you're basically saying, at this point, we want to have it looked at by staff and come back, and that's what the moratorium does. If you were to, if you were to adopt an ordinance tonight, again, a part of that would read that, once that ordinance is adopted, it ends that part of the moratorium. So again, that's why, based upon what I've heard tonight, and I can't speak for all of you, of course, but if your direction is going towards, we want staff to kind of look at this whole ordinance again, my recommendation tonight would be pass the moratorium and have staff come back with the whole package.
All right, let's hear what Mr. Fox has.
Okay. I think Mr. Heer did a good job, and that's why I'm going this direction. I'm doing my best to frame this issue where we don't get ourselves in a box with respect to what we'd like to see happen, because my sense is we may have some individual things that we may want to put in. I'm certainly, you know, we all are looking at that. If we, and we cannot adopt the moratorium if we start changing the ordinance. That's what the city attorney just said. What we can do is we can adopt the moratorium, we can send it back to staff with our comments, then staff can fashion a new ordinance and bring that back. And if we adopt it, which I'm sure we will, then the moratorium goes away. And that seems to me to be a more, you know, road to where we're trying to get here in terms of the ad hoc committee's recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation, the public testimony we have here tonight, and basically the information we received from this public hearing. Staff has really yet to get direction from council on this. And I think, given the fact that we may have some different perspectives, I think we need to give them some direction and then have them bring back an ordinance with all the inputs that they've had, and all, so that's my sense. So let me, that's, my first motion is that we adopt recommendation number two, and let me just present this to the council. If we find that that puts us in a box, I'd be happy to actually, as the maker of the motion, to revisit that and take that off the table. But I want to get us, in respect to what the mayor was saying, let's start moving the ball. So I'm moving recommendation number two, staff recommendation number two, which is consistent with the ad hoc committee's recommendation and the planning commission.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, I apologize if I was confusing you, but if you were to take, for example, A and B, we have two different issues, and you wanted to say, we want to pass A and just do it. What my point is that for the moratorium, the way it's worded, we'd have to actually take out portions of the moratorium and dissect it to ensure that we're not hurting ourselves in the future.
That's why I said B.
Right. So if you do B, then you won't be making any changes to the ordinance at this night, tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Price.
To be clear, what you're proposing, Mr. Fox, is simply to extend the moratorium and make, I assume you're going to say this next, and make no other changes but give staff some direction tonight and revisit this entire municipal code amendment at a later date.
Exactly.
Is everybody clear on that?
Councilmember Bill Lepenya?
Yes, I was hopeful that we could vote on portions of that tonight.
We can't do it.
For the parking lot trees for which there was unanimous support.
That's what I asked the city attorney two hours ago.
And you say we can't do that. And actually also remove the owner-planted exemption from commercial.
Right.
Mr. Heer?
Again, it is that if you are going to make any changes tonight that you want to adopt as an ordinance, the moratorium as written has to be changed because the moratorium is encompassing all the statutes that are there.
Okay.
So with the understanding that you want to go back and change a portion of the ordinance in its entirety, my recommendation is to pass the moratorium and do not go any further with the ordinances, because once you pass the moratorium as written, you're not changing any of the, you're not dissecting it anymore for any future work.
And how quickly do we have to come back?
I'm sorry?
How quickly? A whole year?
We have a year, but we can do it in a year, a month.
Right. Again, the plan would be, once staff comes back and you approve and adopt an ordinance, it would end the moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's nice.
Okay, so again, I'm moving recommendation number two, B.
Why then, tell, oh, thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you. Maybe I'm not getting something here, but why then do we even have number one on the recommendation? If you're saying that by extending the moratorium, we have to come back.
Because, I can answer that, I think.
With new recommendations from staff.
A says we adopt the report and the recommendations in their entirety, which we're not going to agree on. I can tell by the comments of the four of us, each of us have different perspectives on that. And so that's why I said early on, I don't think we're going to come to agreement. We need clarity. We need to send some of this stuff back to staff. For example, none of the HOA stuff is addressed.
That's not part of the agenda.
Well, I get it, but I mean, we got to.
But that could be handled in a completely separate manner.
That's, I don't think so. That's my perspective. I think we need to do this one time. Also say this, I'm not in agreement that parking trees should be removed administratively. I don't like that idea, not even one, because basically as it's written right now, they can remove, and Mr. Prescott, they can remove a 400-year-old tree, as long as it's just one. I'm not okay with that. The first time that it happened, that's okay. They need to go to the planning commission to do that. They need a planning commission hearing to do that. My understanding is, as it's written right now, they can remove up to three. I'm not okay with that. Because if they go to the planning commission, there will be no more, we didn't know this was happening. The other thing is, I look at it as a practical matter. We don't have a lot of these properties anymore, but we have a few. And under this current ordinance, if, for example, Regency wanted to go remove one of those other oak trees that's still there, they could do it. And it could be approved at staff. I'm not taking any issue with staff, and my point is, some of those trees, they need a planning commission approval.
Well, that's an interesting perspective.
Well, that's just one. That's why we'll send this back to staff.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think I also need to point out that we need a four-fifth vote here. We heard that. So we would have to vote unanimously here tonight.
Not going to happen.
And I don't see that happening either.
No, a four-fifth vote to approve, extend the moratorium. That has to be.
Is that correct, Mr. Heer?
Yeah.
That is correct. And just, again, you would need all four of you to vote for the moratorium. And my point again is that if you were to change the ordinance in any way, you have to change the moratorium wording, because some of it would become conflicting. And if you do that and you don't have an agreement, then the moratorium's not passed.
I think three out of four of us get that completely.
Well, I must say, I thought the extension of the moratorium was more formality than anything else, and that we could, in fact, make some decisions tonight. And if the ordinance was changed, the extension of the moratorium, because of a two-day overlap, would extend enough to cover these decisions being made.
Correct, Mayor, and, and.
And you yourself said we could talk about the exemption and the parking lot trees.
Correct. And my point again is that if you are to vote on ordinances tonight for these two sections, you still would vote for the moratorium. It becomes dead or dies once the ordinances are put into place, which would technically at this time would be two days after, you know, two days after the moratorium currently is extended to. And so my concern is that, the way the moratorium is right now, it is written to encompass every change of the ordinance, because there's an assumption from staff that we are recommending this, the changes that we have. And we heard tonight that you, members of the council, are not, you know, going to at least approve one portion of it for sure. And so my point for the moratorium is that then you would change the moratorium wording to ensure that it is something that reflects what is going to be approved tonight as an ordinance and what is not going to be approved as an ordinance. And again, you need four votes tonight to do the moratorium with any changes that we're going to make. And so when I hear that you're talking about changing that ordinance, my recommendation is simply, why do a piecemeal for one thing when we have this major issue that we've been talking about tonight that has to be addressed? And you're talking about the possibility of having staff come back with changes to other portions of the ordinance.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that was the point of this entire hearing tonight, that we may well be changing the ordinance.
Correct, the ordinance for two.
It might have been nice if we had known ahead of time that that would not be able to be done because of the way the moratorium was worded.
Well, the moratorium is.
So I guess what Mr. Heer is saying is, we all need to agree to extend the moratorium and then send the whole thing back to staff, because of the way the moratorium's.
No, he's not saying.
What I'm saying is that if you adopt, to, for example, if you took staff's recommendation tonight and you adopted the ordinance as staff has recommended tonight.
Right.
I understand that. But if you were to do that, you would still pass the moratorium. Once these ordinance became law, then the moratorium is over. Since you're not going to do that tonight, from what I hear, what's going to happen is you have to change the moratorium to ensure that once one part of the ordinance comes into effect, it doesn't kill the moratorium for the whole thing, because that's how it's worded, so you have to dissect it. And since I've also heard tonight that you plan to possibly look at the ordinance as a whole, not just these two sections, these two main sections, my recommendation then is continue the moratorium so we can come back, staff come back as you want to have happen, to talk about these two sections and other sections of the ordinance that you deem appropriate, and you instruct the staff to do. And that's the clarity I'm trying to provide.
All right. Let just me ask you one question. If we all vote to extend the moratorium, can we make, in your opinion, make a decision on the owner-planted exemption and the so-called parking lot trees?
Yes, you can.
But you can't change it.
Correct. So then the moratorium would end that section, but because it's connected with the other one, you want to make sure that you would dissect that out. And if you don't have a four-fifth vote for that, I mean, four of you tonight, that would be not passed.
All right. Anybody have any comments on this?
So, couple things. One is, by passing B of the moratorium, we freeze everything exactly the way it is right now. We basically do what we did, okay? So I think that we're all in agreement with that. So that's why I'm starting with that. I think after that, we're going to be doing a lot of staff work at a council meeting, because I just shared one example that I have, and maybe some of you agree, maybe you don't, but even if you do, I think staff needs to review that to bring back to the council, hey, that sounds good, but you know what? That's a problem. The other issue is, as I mentioned, I think the, while the moratorium's in place, I think we have to address the residential trees that are on residential properties, and we have to come up with a common sense approach to that, because we are a 50-year-old city. So while I said I'm open to going back to the ordinance prior to 2010, the issues that brought that ordinance to us remain. In fact, they're five years older. We have to address that. We can't just simply ignore why those folks came down to it. Again, I think in an effort to address that, we went too far, and then we had this issue at the commercial center. So I think that needs to be reviewed. And the city attorney's advising the council, we simply can't do that tonight. It's not on the agenda, we're not able to do that, and I would suggest, even if we could, that would not be a good idea, not good use of the public or the council's time. I think we need to send it back to staff with all of our collective comments, whether we agree or not, send it back to staff, and then have staff give us a more comprehensive report that addresses this, I'm not going to say once and for all, but certainly something that's easily understood, it applies to the various stakeholders, and it just clarifies a lot of the stuff. So that's what I think is our best opportunity tonight. So I start with the moratorium recommendation to B. That's a motion again.
Do you have any motion beyond that?
I'm going to start with that.
Start with that.
Yeah, and like.
All right.
We need to move forward here.
Any discussion on the motion?
Don't be trying to trick anybody.
Well, I think we're just disappointed that we didn't have more leeway in terms of more room to play with.
Yes.
That we're so restricted by the wording of the staff report and the ordinance and the moratorium, that there isn't anything, there is no wiggle room. And so I think that is, therein lies the frustration.
Yes. I would agree.
Yeah, I should say. Yeah, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah. I think I'm going to support the motion, but it's, it doesn't go anywhere near to what I wanted to accomplish tonight.
But we're not done yet.
We're not done yet. All right. So motion on the floor to extend the moratorium. Vote, please.
That motion carries 4-0, and I need to read the ordinance title. It's an interim urgency ordinance extending moratorium established by ordinance number 1596 NS and extended by ordinance 1598 NS on administrative processing of requests involving removal of four or more planted nursery-grown parking lot oak trees or six or more nursery-grown landmark trees, and on issuance of any owner-planted oak tree exemption permit.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mitnick would like to make a comment.
All right, very good.
All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, procedurally here, the, what was being. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, procedurally here, the, what is being wrestled with here is, the council established the committee, assigned a task to the committee. The committee did its work and put its recommendations forward. Planning commission reviewed that, had some revisions, and now it's here in front of you tonight. And as your staff, we're now getting a better sense as to some of the concerns that the council has with respect to the issue in front of you. So as I understand it, in addition to adopting or extending the urgency, or the, excuse me, the moratorium, staff is, if council would like, you can refer to us to review and study the issues you've raised, and we would be glad to do that, and then come back to you with options. And I think that would help, because we have a little bit more clarity here with respect to what your concerns are. And then we can come back and give you those options, and then you would have more clarity, rather than trying to do that tonight over the next few hours at the dais. I think that would be an ineffective use of your time. That would be an option for you to pursue. Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Mitnick just repeated what I was suggesting. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission...
Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
I'm moving that council direct staff to come back and bring back an oak tree ordinance with the following items to be addressed, either through a direct recommendation or through options. And my recommendation would be that I will start, we'll work our way down. If we can work through some consensus in terms of, yes, we'd like to direct staff to do that, that's fine. But it would not be my intent this evening to not provide for individual council members to provide that direction to staff. And then they can bring us back a document with either their recommendations, or as Mr. Mitnick pointed out, options to address our concerns. So I'm going to move that, again, we direct staff to bring back an ordinance in its entirety. In that ordinance, I'd like staff to address both the ad hoc committee's recommendations, the planning recommendations, and also these comments from the council. And I will start. First, I'd like staff to review and recommend on the parking trees in terms of the ability to remove either a valley oak, or an established, you know, 50-year tree, you know, use whatever staff's measurements are, but established trees without a planning commission hearing. So my intent there to be clear is that we would take the administrative approval process away from staff with certain criteria, certain size trees. I'm going to, whatever that may be. Obviously, a valley oak fits that criteria. Number two, I would like us to revisit and go back to the pre-2010 ordinance as it relates to oak tree removal and how we handle trees. I'd like staff to review the comments that were brought to the council back in 2010 or '09 with respect to residential oak trees, or residential trees, and the impact that those trees had on the residents. Number three, I'd like staff to review and make recommendations on the permitting costs, either no or low-cost permits to either trim or prune trees in residential neighborhoods. Number four, I'd like you to include the issue with the HOAs that they brought up, and have some type of reconciliation on how HOAs are treated. And then five, I don't, my own view is, I think we're making a mistake in making the distinction between an owner-planted tree and a, you know, the tree just came there when it gets to a certain size. I think we need to get rid of that. That's my view, is that, once a tree reaches a certain size, I really don't care who planted it, particularly in a public area, there's an expectation that that tree is there, and from the, all the testimony we've heard from folks, I think we need to take a hard look at that. And again, this is in the parking lot areas. I think we need to treat commercial properties, in some cases, much differently than we do a residential property in terms of private property rights. Those are my thoughts. Those are my comments.
All right. You had six points there, did you not?
I guess.
Give me the bullet, bullet version of each one. Real enough.
That the removal, the administrative approval to remove a heritage oak, valley oak, or large tree, I don't know how to, okay, in a parking area, needs planning commission approval. You can't do that administratively, even for one tree.
Okay.
Our current thing says three. I'm saying no. Got to have planning for one tree, at a certain size. And I'll let staff bring that back. Number two, that the HOA issue is addressed. Number three, that the ordinance prior to 2010, all the measures that were in place, that seemed to serve us well, that we address the residential component prior to 2010. And I'm looking at you, Mr. Prescott, because you're really the guy here. I know you were around then when we dealt with this. And so if this is not providing enough clarity, let us know. But I think you know the intent here. The public comment that we receive with respect to the hardship on residential properties prior to 2010, we need to, we need to take a look at those. Number...
Permit fees?
Yeah, permit fees. We need to take a look at the permit fees, no or low cost with respect to pruning, trimming, removal. And then, we need to revisit this owner-planted versus indigenous. I think at a specific size, it doesn't matter anymore. We need to just treat it as a, as a big tree, and we're not going to let you just cut it out for more parking spaces.
All right. I'm not quite clear on the residential part.
Well, I don't remember all the things that came up, but I mean, we heard some tonight, is, somebody has a...
Is there a difference between that and the owner-planted exemption?
There may be. And in my view, again, a valley oak, like the kind that are in Caneo Oaks, you bought the house with it, these are two or three, you're going to live with it. Okay? You're not, you're not cutting that tree out unless it's a hazard or that type of thing. On the other hand, you could have a tree that was a very mature, big tree, and it's causing a problem, because it's dropping leaves in the pool that you built 10 years ago, constantly. I think a homeowner ought to be able to take that tree out. Yeah. I'm just giving an example. I mean, because, you know, these are trees that were, that they've grown, they're 50 years old now, they're causing problems. Maybe there was a room addition done, and now there's no, there's no sun coming into that side of the, those are private property issues that I think we need to at least have staff address to address the private property rights of people who own homes.
All right. It looks like we're creating a laundry list of items here.
Well, I know back then, we actually did have a number of things. But what I'm saying is, is that a residential tree, even though it's mature, as long as it's not a valley oak, a homeowner should have the ability to remove that in certain circumstances.
What do you think, Mr. Price? What would you want to add?
I'm just asking for staff to report back.
Yeah, you had, you had one other item on there that dealt with the comments that were, that were brought to council in 2009 that resulted in the 2010 change. You wanted staff to review those comments made by those homeowners.
Yes. I give you an example. I was walking precincts way back. Guy had a tree in his front yard, and it was dropping a bunch of stuff on his cars. He wanted the tree out, and it was a big problem. Coming to the city, it was a big problem to have the tree removed. It was not an oak tree. And that was one of a number of them. So we just need to revisit that. That's all I'm saying. It goes back to prior to 2010, the city caused a lot of problems in terms of you wanting to take a tree out. So again, I'm not asking council to vote. I'm just referring these items. Let's have, make recommendations, and then whatever else the council thinks we need to throw in this.
Mr. Price, what would you want to add, if anything?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's any reason to even consider, if we're going to go with this single-family residential exemption of any number of trees, should there be some differentiation between what that exempts? That it exempts pruning or encroachment, and doesn't exempt the removal of it? That might be different. I'll leave that to staff. I think you get where I'm going with that. Other than that, I would be anxious to hear...
Again, the current recommendation is three trees in 10 years for residential property. I don't agree with that. I think a property owner should be able to remove all three trees if they want, or six trees, depending on what the circumstances are. But I don't think we should prohibit a property owner, as long as they're not removing a valley oak, you know, one of those, you know, heritage trees. Yeah, that, you're not touching. But a large, mature trees in your property, I think you should be able to remove them if you want. It's your property.
Ms. Bill, opinion? What about any additions?
Okay. I want to make sure that in this wish, on this wish list, that we also include the, you obviously want to revisit the owner-planted exemption, although that was recommended to be done away with by the planning commission for residential as well as commercial. I'd like to, I'd like to have that in there. Not just for commercial, but also for residential, because that is what was actually also agreed upon. And protection for the valley oak is fine, but again, we do have procedures in place which allow for the removal of an oak tree, be it a lobata or an agrofolia, if and when it is a threat to public health, safety, and property. Perhaps we need to add a condition of damaging driveways to this list of hazards in order to allow for the removal. So if a tree, if it's not a lobata, raises the foundation of, or raises a driveway, then, to me, that is a problem. But we, again, we have to, we have to look at the age of the tree, and as well as the size of the tree. I do want to make sure that, since the pre-2010 ordinance allows, does not distinguish between owner-planted and naturally-grown tree, that we, that staff comes back with something that has that in there. Let's see. When you say "public tree", you say you mean parking lot trees?
Yes.
Okay. But there are many trees that are in the public that line major thoroughfares in Thousand Oaks, which are on private property. You'd go down many streets in Conejo Oaks, in Westlake Village, North Ranch. Imagine all of those valley oaks and oak trees disappearing.
I said you can't.
No, no, no. No, no, they're on private property. They are on private property, but I think, I mean...
Specifically said, you can't cut those trees down. The valley oaks, like in Caneo Oaks, you can't cut, that needs to be a hazard, or some type of, some type of issue with hazard. So you're not cutting those down.
And the agrofolia, though, as well. Agrofolia is also important.
Yeah, I'm just, for me, I'm talking about the 200, 300-year-old tree that everybody...
And is this only to oak trees, for oak trees, or are we going to include also the other six landmark trees, which are the walnut, the toyauns, the sycamores, and I forget which other trees?
That's not my, part of my motion. It's not part of my direction on residential property. I'm not, not including that. Staff could bring that back, but if council wants to put that in, that's fine. We'll...
Landmark trees include, the landmark ordinance includes all those other trees, such as the black walnut, the toyaun, the sycamore, and bay laurel, and so forth. So I think we need to look at that as well. All right.
All right. Staff getting all this? I hope.
Well, it's, we're hearing it. We're going to obviously listen to the tape.
It was replayed, yeah.
It's, it seems to be getting very broad and open-ended.
Doesn't, it does, doesn't it?
And we have limited, frankly, limited staff resources to deal with this in an expeditious manner.
Yeah. Well, I, for one, feel it's unfortunate that this has gotten way more complicated than I think it needs to be, frankly. And, but I suppose our hands are tied because of the way this moratorium was written. I wish that had been pointed out to us before this evening, but it was not. All I can tell you is, our oak tree laws need to protect oak trees, not endanger them. And if we're talking about agreeing and disagreeing on things, the planning commission decision to allow any three trees to be cut down over a 10-year period, I don't agree with. I absolutely don't agree with that.
That's why we're going to change.
Okay? And I've had a problem with the owner-planted exemption for five years now. I voted against it on the planning commission, you know? So I suppose, you know, this list encapsulates most of what I've been thinking about. The only thing we might look at would be this two-inch business. Is that reasonable? If there was no owner-planted exemption, could it be, in fact, four inches? Three inches? Something like that? We might take a look at that, but even that, I'm a little skeptical about.
Well, you know, the ordinance served us well for 42 years.
Well, it absolutely did. I agree completely. I agree completely. And, you know, we, I guess we could start getting the debate of it, but as far as the owner-planted exemption, there's no biological reason to differentiate between a owner-planted tree and an indigenous tree. An oak tree's an oak tree. I've been saying that for five years now. See, we're all agreeing. It's great, it's going to be easy. Go ahead, Mr. Mitnick.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a good, healthy discussion. And as a council member just pointed out, you had an ordinance in place that evolved over many years and decades, and it served the community well. There was some revisions to it in 2010, and we did have a challenge a year ago. But look, good discussion. Staff will come back. We'll do a comprehensive holistic review of the ordinance and the issues raised. It's, it does sound daunting, but it's really not that difficult. We can go through it in a very thorough, logical, thoughtful way, and we will come back, and you'll have a menu of options. We have a lot more clarity tonight, believe it or not, because we understand what your concerns are better than we did before tonight. And look, we're not the first city to deal with this, or wrestle with this type of issue. There are some good examples for us to emulate. There are a lot of best management practices out there. We hear your desire to protect trees and to make it difficult for people to remove older, more mature trees, et cetera. And also, we need to balance residents' rights to manage their property, their assets, and to not have the cost of having a review and getting permits to be onerous. So we hear you loud and clear. We will come back, and we'll give you those options. I don't view it as overly complex or difficult. We will do it, and we'll be back in front of you. Thank you.
I appreciate that last sentence. I'd like the staff, and I'm sure my fellow council members would agree, to keep this as simple and as forthright as possible. I'm not looking forward to a 75-page staff report. Okay? There's specific issues. Let's address them so they're understandable to us and the public. All right.
Just a final comment.
Yes, Mr. Fox, go ahead.
Yeah, because I don't want to, you know, I know we're maybe disappointed because of lack of flexibility, but I do want to point out, in fairness, staff's hands were handcuffed here, is they were required to bring back the ad hoc committee report and planning commission report. That was what their charge was. I think I agree with the mayor, maybe a heads up on terms of the moratorium constraints. But I think we're at a place where we were going to end up, is, I don't think there was any illusion that we were going to adopt this report after we read it in its entirety, because we clearly have different viewpoints. Staff brought it back, and we had a good hearing. We're going to send it to staff for, now with our comments. And I don't think it's that complicated. I really don't. I think they're going to bring it back in ordinance, and I think, I think for the most part, it's going to meet most of our interests. We may have to tweak it a little bit, but I'm with the mayor. I think it needs to be a very simply-understood piece of legislation, if you will, on how we're dealing specifically with oak trees, both public and private and all that stuff, and then also for the residents. It should be fairly easily understood.
All right. I agree. All right. Any more discussion on this motion? It's all cleared to everyone? All right. Let's vote. Oh, hang on. Yeah, good point. Timetable. What do you think, Mr. Mitnick?
We're going to need at least a couple, three months to go through it and come back to you. I'd love to say it'd be back for the next meeting. That's not practical. It's going to take us a while just to digest what was said here, but we'll do it in a reasonable timeframe, and it will get done. It will be before you.
All right.
And it will be simple with clear options.
Good. All right. Let's vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to call a five-minute break here, and we'll come back and finish up. All right? End of 10A, because we have some folks here that need to go home, actually. So let's go to Councilmember Bill LaPena for your traffic commissioner appointment. So let's go to Councilmember Bill Lepenya for your traffic commissioner appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very pleased to recommend Angie Simpson for the position of Traffic and Transportation Commission, and it is very apropos that the item right after this one will have to do with traffic mitigation measures. So I hope that both nominee Angie Simpson and Mr. Price's nominee will be able to stay a little bit longer to get a taste of what they will have to do in the very near future. So it is my pleasure to recommend Angie Simpson for the next four years to serve on the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Her very impressive resume is part of the agenda packet, and I couldn't be happier that she is interested in serving the public. Thank you.
All right.
And that was a motion.
All right. We do have a motion on the floor to appoint Angie Simpson to the Traffic Commission. Can we vote on that, please?
Motion carries 3-0. Councilmember Fox is absent as of this time. Congratulations, Angie. You start May 20th.
Getting right to work. All right, here comes Mr. Fox. Why don't you go, Mr. Price, with your-
All right, thank you. It's with great pleasure that I nominate Drew Pletcher as my new planning commissioner. Drew and his, did I say planning commissioner? I did. Wow, got elevated already.
Got her. Wow.
Traffic and Transportation Commission.
Upwardly moment.
Drew is up there, seated with his wife, Tish, who is a, she's a product of the Conejo Valley Unified School District. She is a teacher. What grade? Second? Second-grade teacher. And she is pregnant with their first child, and Drew actually just recently completed law school, passed the bar, and he'll be doing great things here in the city of Thousand Oaks and beyond for the next many years. And I guess you start on May 20th as well, so it's a great pleasure.
We have a motion to approve Andrew Pletcher to the Traffic Commission. If you vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
And just as a housekeeping measure, this is a little out of the ordinary, but I want to revote on Angie, so we get a 4-0, or well, presumably, on all four of us to be here for that. Could you vote on that, too, please, for Angie Simpson for the Traffic Commission?
Motion carries 4-0.
There you go. All right. And Mr. Fox, your appointee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to nominate for reappointment Sharon McMahon to the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Just of note, Sharon is the one and only commissioner that has served my entire time in office. So this will be 24 years on the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and, you know, as you know, that is no easy commission to serve on. So God willing, she will, she will complete 24 years of service on that commission. And Sharon, I don't think you're here tonight, but just thank you so much for your service to the city. It's my pleasure to re, recommend reappointment of Sharon McMahon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fox, and thank you, Sharon, for your service. A motion to reappoint Sharon McMahon? Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. So we have our Traffic Commission back to full strength, and thank you all for your service. Let us now move to public, oh, no, wait a minute. I'll get it. We're gonna move up a department report, that's right, on the traffic control measure, and that is 9D. And Mr. Finley, you'll give us a report on that, please?
Actually, I'll be giving the report. Jim Mashiko-
Oh, Mr. Mashiko, sorry.
Engineering Division Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This item is neighborhood request for traffic control measures on Newberry Road east of Hag Road. This item was previously reviewed by the commission twice, first time in November of last year, and most recently in February of this year. I'll briefly recap what happened at each of those meetings, but before I do, let me just show you a slide that shows the location of Newberry Road located south of the 101 freeway. The area circled in red is an area that we're looking at tonight. It's a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. The street is fronted by single-family homes. Just off to the west of this location is, of Hag Road, is a higher-speed 40 mile-per-hour road segment. This is sort of the location that's causing a lot of the problems for the neighborhood. The traffic that enters this area, the residential area, comes in at a higher rate of speed, and people who are leaving the residential segment entering the, this sort of commercial segment tends to speed up right at Hag Road. We've tried to implement a couple of measures, including additional speed limit signs within the neighborhood, and also in addition, we posted a radar feedback sign, which has produced some reduction in speed. At the first meeting, the Traffic Commission last November, the commission reviewed the traffic data regarding the street, and they found that the city's speed hump policy was fully satisfied. Public input regarding the idea of speed humps along the street was mixed. The residents who front Newberry Road primarily support that idea. The residents on the side streets have different ideas. They have concerns with traffic diversion that could come onto their streets. The commission continued this item, and they asked staff to take a look at a number of intersections in the neighborhood to see whether or not multiway stop sign control might be warranted. So fast forward to the February meeting that we just had. We found from our findings that two of the intersections do qualify for multiway stop sign control based on site distance reasons, and for those two locations, one intersection in particular was supported by residents. That's at the intersection of Hag Road and Newberry Road. After considering the public input, the Traffic Commission did turn to staff for recommendation on what to do with the warranted stop signs and speed humps. Staff provided a recommendation to take a phased or incremental approach. First step is to install the multiway stop sign at the intersection of Hag and Newberry, and then review traffic conditions in about six months to see whether or not there's any changes in travel patterns, speeds, and volumes. The Traffic Commission felt differently. They opted for a full implementation recommendation to the City Council, which is to install both the multiway stop sign at Hag and Newberry, in addition to two-inch-high speed cushions along the street. Here's just a graphic that shows the three intersections that were reviewed for multiway stop sign control. The two intersections that are marked in green are the ones that qualified for multiway stop signs. This slide just summarized some of the findings regarding the city's speed hump policy. Met a number, or met all the criteria for speed hump installation. If the City Council does make a recommendation for installation of speed humps along the street, we do recommend the installation of speed cushions, which is what we have here. This photograph shows what we installed on Caya Levo late last year. Speed cushions have open slots to minimize impact to emergency response time, and in addition, we're recommending a lower two-inch speed hump profile rather than the standard three-inch-high design to minimize any traffic diversion throughout the neighborhood. This slide just shows about the placement of six speed cushions along Newberry Road. We also performed a license plate survey where we took a look at the residents indicated that there's shortcut traffic in the neighborhood. So what we discovered by this map, which is shown by this yellow line, there is shortcut traffic that enters the neighborhood from the intersection of Newberry and Hag. They travel eastward along Newberry, make a turn on Green Meadow, and then exits the neighborhood at Lynn Road at Green Meadow. We do feel by taking a phased approach, by installing a stop sign at the intersection of Hag and Newberry, some of this shortcut traffic could be diverted back to Hag Road, which is the street that, that traffic should be on. In addition, there's also a benefit by having the multiway stop sign at that location, is that there will be some slowing, or definitely will be slowing, at that location, probably within about 500 feet either side of that stop sign. So with that, again, our staff recommendation is to take a phased approach on traffic control measures of Newberry Road. That concludes this presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mashiko, questions for Mr. Mashiko? Mr. Price?
Mr. Mashiko, in one of the supplemental information packets today, there was an email from a gentleman who was questioning why we went straight to speed humps or cushions, and suggested that there be some additional enforcement there. Actually, this is probably not for Mr. Mashiko, but perhaps Chief Hagel. Can you describe, chief, for us, some of the enforcement efforts that were, that were taken there on Newberry Road?
Absolutely. In 2014, we wrote 15 citations using enforcement as a tool to complement the other engineering and education in those streets. Out of those 15 citations, five were for speed, and the other were for miscellaneous activities. In addition, in that street in the last four years, there was one, one vehicle accident, and that was a bicyclist that basically impacted with a parked car along that area. In addition, we use our traffic cadets for moving the mobile trailer that we moved throughout the 360 miles-plus roads around the city. We moved that in there for education also.
Thank you. I seem to remember that you said that there were 15 citations written. What was that time period?
2014. So in, that's just this section, that we're, phase one of this section is what those citations were issued.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Discussion and/or motion? Mr. Price? Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I beg your pardon, we do have some speakers. And the first is Rick McHenry. And Mr. McHenry is not here, so we have Dolores Madola, who is not here.
No.
Yeah. We went over a little bit on the last issue. Finally, Bill Skresfig. There he is. Hello, Bill.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bill Skresfig. I live on Newberry Road, and I've been a resident here since 1991. I would appreciate, appreciate your support for the resolution that installs the speed cushions. I have concerns with the one that's recommending the stop sign, and I just don't think that adequately addresses the traffic that's coming east to west. In other words, from the park, heading west. There's a lot of high-speed traffic in that area, and I'm afraid the stop sign just doesn't work until you get closer to it, although there is that other mitigating factor of just reducing the volume coming through. But there's, there's a lot of traffic that goes east to west there, high-speed traffic. And then the second item I wanted to mention was, just by chance, last week, I was out passing some flyers to make sure the neighborhood knew this was coming up before the council, and I happened to talk to the postman that was driving, delivering mail along that street, and mentioned to him about some speed bumps, and then he shared a story with me about his experiences on that street, and that he has a lot of concern that there's high speed on there, and he actually uses his flashers on his mail truck whenever he's delivering mail on that street. And so then he also shared, he said, you know, normally that's not allowed because there's concern within the post office that you become a target, but he actually got some special waivers for delivering mail on that street, and he keeps his flashers on when he's on that street because of the speed on that street. And so maybe if anybody had ever driven on that street and seen that, you'd, you could kind of corroborate the story. So anyways, I appreciate you guys looking at this, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Price has a question for you, Bill.
Sir, if I could, which segment of this, of Newberry Road do you live on? Closer, closer to which street?
I'm kind of right in the middle, at Trailside Court.
Oh.
Right there. Right in that turn or that blind area there.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mashiko, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I don't, I don't think there's any comments.
No more speakers. All right. And we do not have any more speakers to this, so, and Ms. Bill Lepenya has a question.
I have a question for staff, perhaps the chief. With the installation of a stop sign, are we, do we expect to see a change in driver behavior?
Simply put, yes. While you may not see a change in, in the entire section immediately, stop signs typically have a distance effect, and depending, that can go from 100 feet to 350 feet. And that's why, for the police services, we really like this approach, phasing it, starting with the simplest engineering, moving to the most extensive engineering. So we start with that. We see if that effect, you know, of slowing people down in the last 300 feet, if that works. If not, then you move to the larger-stage engineering plan. Really support it.
Will we also have a sign warning of the upcoming stop sign, so that the driver can prepare for it, and will that sign remain there?
Yes, that's customary on any type of multiway installation. We'd probably also add signs that say "traffic condition changed" ahead for about two or three months, and then remove that sign.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And any other questions? Mr. Price, how about a motion?
You know what? I am prepared to make a motion, and while I, I understand that the speed humps or cushions are the preferred method by the one speaker, I think that the phased approach is probably the best. And I do believe that that is going to have an impact on the speed on Newberry Road. And I think that in the report here, it indicates that we would continue to evaluate speeds, and that we will take a look at it, or have another report back to us within six months. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'd be very interested in seeing some, some more data six months from now, in particular down there between the park and Trailside, to see if there's been any impact in slowing traffic there. If there hasn't, then we might need to take it to the next step. But I think for now, I'm comfortable with recommendation A, and I would so move.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Discussion to that motion? I'm in favor of that. I like the incremental approach. Very reluctant to put speed cushions on Newberry Road. It's a, it runs parallel to the 101 freeway. It's a widely-used thoroughfare, so let's, let's take it one step at a time. Give this a try. Motion on the floor? Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. Mr. Spurgeon will now give us a little update on the ever-shifting landscape of the water Yeah, that's number 9A, department report. We got some news on that today, didn't we?
Thank, yeah, indeed, we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it has been sort of a changing landscape, so to speak, here. And California has been in an extended drought. We're in the fourth year. Essentially, the entire state has been affected by these dry conditions, and in almost half is in a exceptional drought, which is the highest level that this U.S. Drought Monitor website has, and that's the darkest color here. And of course, Ventura County is, is in that, that band. And although a lack of rainfall is certainly an issue and affects so many people throughout California, in Southern California, our water supply really is, is, has to do with snowpack, the snowpack in the Sierra. And here's four years of photos from the Yosemite Valley, taken on March, in mid-March, and you can see the difference in, in snowpack. And this, this is where so much of the concern is, because the State Water Project originates in Northern California, in, in the Sierra. in Northern California, in the Sierra mountain range. Right now, this last April, the measurement of snowpack is the lowest ever recorded. 5%, roughly 5% of where it should be, on average, is what the snow level is in that area. And that results in only 20% of the available allocation being available for delivery to the state water project. The other source for Southern California is the Colorado River. And that basin is in better shape. There's about 63% snowpack of average. And about 74% of the full allocation will be delivered. But together, it does create a serious condition for Southern California and throughout the state. To provide some context, I'm showing here 15 years, roughly, of city water usage. The last drought we had was in 2009. And you can see that, following that, city residents responded with significant reduction in water use. In fact, from the high usage in 2007, by 2011, that had dropped 26%. Following that have been very dry and hot years, and water use has increased, as you can see, in '12, '13, and '14. But we project 2015 to be, again, a drop. And I think this is our residents responding to much of the information that's out there on our current drought. So, we should be actually down about 13% from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. So, that's good news. Our residents are doing what they can at this point. Now, back in 2009, the city adopted a water conservation ordinance that included a number of permanent water conservation restrictions. These are in place citywide at all times, not just in drought conditions. And these include limitations on outdoor watering, and hosing down driveways and sidewalks, fixing leaks, serving water, and a number of other requirements. Our ordinance then includes three different levels of increasing water restrictions. Level 1, which we did enact back in... Or I said, City Council enacted back in 2009. This limits outdoor watering to three days a week in the summer and two days a week in the winter. That Level 1 was in place from 2009 to 2011. A Level 2 further restricts outdoor watering to two weeks and... Or two days a week and one day a week, respectfully. And then, some limitations on swimming pool filling. Level 3 is a true emergency situation. This is where there would be a natural disaster, such as an earthquake, which would significantly damage our water infrastructure. And that's not what we're talking about now. But that's... Those are the three levels that we have in our ordinance. Now, to catch you up on what the state has been doing over the last year and a half, in January last year, the governor declared the drought state of emergency. The State Water Board then, in July last year, issued a number of regulations. These are all things already... That we cover in our permanent water conservation restrictions. So, there was nothing at that time that the Water Board set forth that we weren't already... That we didn't already have in place. Last month, they issued some additional restrictions, including limiting days a week for watering, and some reporting on how we're enforcing the regulations. And then, on April 1st, this is when the governor issued the executive order that has been so much in the news recently, and that is for mandatory statewide 25% reduction in water use. Another part of his executive order included some limitations on irrigating turf in public street medians, and then there's some other requirements as well. The governor then directed the State Water Board to develop specific regulations to implement these various items in the executive order. Last week, the Water Board did issue some preliminary framework that attempts to implement the 25% statewide water savings requirement. These are draft... That was a draft framework. There's been a lot of discussion about it in the press, and essentially, the Water Board is looking for public input on how they set that forth. Staff has already submitted our comments, because we have several concerns about how they've put it together so far. And as we go forward, the Water Board will be having additional rulemaking process that will include revised draft regulations, taking additional public comment, having hearings, and then finally adopting the final regulations early... In early May. We'll be following that very closely and providing additional input as we get those further draft regulations. Our local wholesale importer, the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, just today adopted their allocation plan, which calls for 15% cutbacks. And this is across the Metropolitan Water District service area, which is essentially all Southern California. So, this is new information. We've been waiting for them to enact this allocation plan. But again, the details are not fully spelled out, and just like the state requirements, it'll take several weeks for us to get more information, so that we know specifically how these... All these regulations, the state regulations and Metropolitan's regulations, how they affect us, Thousand Oaks. And then, we can plan accordingly and come back to you, which we are planning to do in May, on May 26th, because by then, we should have the details of the regulations. We will likely be recommending a Level 1 conservation water shortage condition. We will have a drought action plan that we can present and discuss with you, various actions on how the city intends to reduce its own water consumption, as well as a public outreach plan to encourage and work with our residents and our businesses, so that they can reach these goals as well. We do have a capital improvement project that's in the current budget for Landscape Master Plan. That will... We hope to start that in the next few months. We will also be completing our groundwater and reclaimed water study. We'll be bringing the details of the results of that study back to you in the next few months. We'll also be meeting with CalAM, CalWater, our partner water purveyors here in the Canal Valley, and also the Park District and School District, to coordinate our efforts for water conservation, as well as being consistent in what we're telling our residents throughout these service areas, so that we're all on the same page. And finally, we have a... Another round of water and wastewater rates to bring back to you in the fall. So, we're starting very, very soon our financial planning efforts there. So, many things will be happening in the next few weeks and also several months. And while city departments have already been reducing water usage, for instance, we've been cutting back on irrigation in many of our public landscape areas. For instance, at City Hall here, we've been amending the soil and reducing water usage almost by half, as an example. We will have more details, again, on what the city's doing, what we can do further on May 26th. A sneak preview of our groundwater study. This is... This is actually very exciting. For many years, until imported water was delivered to the valley, this is how the city survived. I mean, there is groundwater here, and there were a number of wells. We're going to be providing a more detailed report again in the coming months. But as you can see here, there are several wells that are proposed to tap into the groundwater basin and start being able to utilize that to irrigate many of the large non-potable fields, whether those be grass fields or green belts at our community parks, playfields, schools, and whatnot. So, these initial locations here are places where we believe the water quality is of good enough quality where we would need minimal, if no, treatment at all to start using these water... Water to irrigate these areas. Quite a few resources available to our residents and businesses shown here, online, including our own teoaks.org/savewater. And our water hotline is active, and we are getting calls on a daily basis from residents asking questions and reporting leaks and other water issues. So, that's the update for now. Lots more to come. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Thank you. Mr. Spurgeon, it says that there are requirements, mandatory cutbacks of 15% by MWD. For someone, or a homeowner who is already a low-water user, at the very bottom of usage, how will that affect someone like that? If they can't really cut back anymore because they have already minimal water use and taken all of the steps to reduce water usage, how will that affect those people?
That's a good question, and I think that applies to many of our residents. I think there are... There were permanent conservation measures enacted as part of the last drought. We've not seen water use return to those pre-2009 levels. And I think that's a reflection of how many of our residents put in low-water appliances, retrofitted sprinklers, and whatnot. But I can tell... I can say that the 15% reduction, that is... That's citywide. So, the goal here is for that level of reduction to be... Actually, it's countywide. It's actually throughout the entire Cuyahoga Water System, which is the East County and portions of Oxnard and Camarillo. As a whole, we all have to meet that 15%. So, what happened in 2009, which was similar, I believe it was 15% then, wasn't it? Yeah, it was the same level of conservation required in 2009. And as a sub-region, we met that. And there may have been an agency or two that didn't, but others were greater, and so it averaged out. We are not going to be looking to every individual water customer to reduce 15%. This is, again, citywide.
And what about people who keep watering their driveways and sidewalks? And I see that on a regular basis?
Well, enforcement will be increasing as this drought continues, and as we enact a Level 1, and we provide more public outreach. This is very similar to what happened in 2009. The... We do rely on folks using our hotline. And when we are made aware of water use that exceeds the restrictions, then we will notify those residents directly by... We use door hangers, we use letters, personal contacts when we can. And we found that to be effective in the vast majority of cases, where people then... Maybe it took a letter or two, or a phone call or two, but they did comply.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Any other questions? Yeah, for those of you who don't know, Thousand Oaks imports 100% of its water. So, we may get a little relief from this groundwater business, but it'll be incremental, I'm afraid. So, we are vulnerable, and it's going to take a concerted effort by the city and the residents to meet this drought challenge. So, I'm looking forward to the drought action plan, and I'm looking for a motion to... Mr. Fox, to institute that?
Remove that we receive and file a report.
All right. Motion on the floor? Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a Department Report, 9B. Rachel Wagner will give that to us on our citywide goals and priorities. Good evening, Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The report I have before you tonight is basically a follow-up from our recent goal-setting study session on March 24th. At that study session, City Council reviewed and made no changes to the following policy documents: the City Mission Statement, Customer Service Philosophy, City Council Norms, and Citywide Goals. And Council established top 10 priorities for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. These documents are brought forth for your formal approval tonight. Just briefly look over them. The City Mission Statement represents the organization's overriding general purpose. The Customer Service Philosophy serves as the guideline for all city employees to follow on customer service. City Council Norms serve as City Council's code of conduct, essentially. And the Citywide Goals are what Council sets every two years, and there are 10 broad goals that cover all city departments and can be revised as needed. At the goal-setting session, Council reviewed their existing goals, and there were no changes made. Therefore, they were reaffirmed for fiscal years 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. We can just take a quick look at those. In addition to the 10 Citywide Goals, Council annually sets 10 specific priorities, which provide direction on which significant policy, program, or project that they would like to see accomplished in the next fiscal year. At the study session, Council reviewed each of their individual top priorities and reached a consensus on a collective set of 10 for fiscal year 2015, 16. Here are the top 10 that were discussed and agreed upon. City Council has the option to establish an ad hoc City Council Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan Committee, as indicated in Top Priority Number 2. If this... If the top priorities are approved this evening, then there's the option to establish the committee tonight and appoint two council members to serve on it. And Top Priority Number 3 was revised after the study session to comply with the Governor's executive order issued on April 1st, which we just heard about. You could see a list in the staff report. Attachment 5 has all of these. The recommendations for this evening are to formally approve the City Mission Statement, Customer Service Philosophy, City Council Norms, Citywide Goals for fiscal years 2015, 16, and 2016, 17; Citywide Top 10 Priorities for fiscal years 2015, 16; and if these top priorities are approved, then to establish an ad hoc City Council Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Questions? Ms. Bill Lepenya.
Thank you. I'm not sure of whether you can answer the question. Maybe it's a question from my colleagues. But what do we hope to accomplish with the formation of the ad hoc City Council Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan Committee? We had a specific plan committee a couple of years ago, and it was disbanded. We had a specific plan committee a couple of years ago, and it was disbanded because the work had been done. But what is, what do we hope to accomplish that we don't already know, such as the number of units in Measure E? We have a specific plan document that gives specific guidelines. We have all the tools needed to develop Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and I'm just wondering why we need that ad hoc committee.
All right. Well, Ms. Wagner, did you have a, or maybe we'll go to Mr. Price, because I think Council Member Bill Verpenya is correct that it's a council discussion that we should have. So, Mr. Price, why don't you?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I see a real need to have an ad hoc committee. There seems to be some uncertainty out there, not just amongst potential developers of properties, but I think also amongst City staff, amongst, I have questions. I think that there needs to be some further clarification. I think that we need to further define where we think the development should occur, where specifically. That three-mile stretch from Moore Park to Duesenberg is the entire specific plan, but I think, from my perspective anyway, I think that we would be better served as a city to concentrate our efforts on the downtown core initially. I also think that there needs to be some discussion about the allocation of the units that have been set aside for the Boulevard Specific Plan. I don't think that, I don't think it's enough. I think that we need to get our arms around how many units are in the bank. I think there's another item on our agenda this evening that will add to that bank. So, I think there's a lot that needs to be hammered out by that ad hoc committee, and I think, you know, I think it was Council Member Fox at one point said, you know, we've got one chance to get this right, and we need to hit a home run. And that is absolutely true. We do. I think the public will be much more confident if we can give some further direction on when, where, and how we want this to be developed, an implementation plan, if you will.
Mr. Fox, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, the, there are really a number of unanswered questions that need to be looked at in a much more detailed fashion that lends itself to a council committee. I'll give you two examples that have nothing to do with the Boulevard. We had a council committee dealing with the various arts issues, and you'll recall it, Mr. Gillette and I had a, you know, it took us over a year to sort through all that, but the end result was a very coherent, well-organized approach to how we were going to handle the various arts communities within the city. More recently, Mr., the mayor and I dealt with the funding issue for the theaters, another very complex issue, took a number of community meetings that we were able to then bring recommendations back to the council. Very problematic trying to do that from staff's perspective, because it does require some council input, and virtually impossible to do in this setting. I would suggest to the council that the Boulevard is as or more complex, given the various stakeholders, the various interests, the various competing interests, and the limited, from my perspective, the more I drive and I look at it, the really truly limited areas where this so-called mixed use that the council's been talking about is really viable. And I think Mr. Price points out, while it's a three-mile stretch, I think as you drive along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, when you start to look at properties that truly are viable for this mixed use that we're all looking at, there's not very many of them. And so, that's why I said at the goal setting, I'm not so sure that the Measure E issue is going to come into play or not, but if we have to address the Measure E issue, then, you know, there's a recommendation that needs to be looked at, needs to be thought through and brought to the council with respect to what are we going to do with Measure E. My sense is, if there's anything that's brought to the council in terms of bringing something to the voters, it will only apply to the Boulevard. We're not, we're not talking about other areas of the city. But I'm not so sure that that's even an issue. So, my vision is, is that this committee will take some field trips. We will look at cities that have pedestrian-friendly streets to see how they function. As an example, Thousand Oaks Boulevard is extremely wide, and I have been told by a number of so-called experts, people that really know that we need to figure out either through hardscape or architectural design in those areas where we want pedestrian-friendly, we've got to narrow that perspective. I was just in Old Monrovia today, and classic example of pedestrian-friendly. It's a very short street, but it was a narrow street. So, what does that do to traffic? So, I think there's a number of things that need to be looked at that I think lend themselves to a committee. And the other thing I would point out is, for the most part, the committee process is very open, it's transparent, there's agendas, the public is invited, much the same as all the other committees that we've worked on. So, the interest in having and making sure that the public is well-informed and is able to participate in these committee meetings by having a committee by de facto, then you're opening it up to the community and their ability to have input. So, if we're going to get something done on the Boulevard, I don't see another way around it. The other thing is, my understanding is Ventura, went through a similar process, and maybe Mr. Powers can comment on it, in identifying, even though they had a specific plan, but identifying areas on their Boulevard that would lend themselves to the mixed use. And then, my sense is, once we went through that process, we bring that back to council, and then council would say, okay, these are where we're going to, this is the area we're going to concentrate on. So, I mean, we could talk all night about this, but that's, I don't know how we do it other than a committee.
I wouldn't disagree with you that the Thousand Oaks Boulevard development, mixed-use development, is one of the most pressing issues that the city faces. I read a quote in the paper the other day that somebody saying how there aren't any pressing issues in the city of Thousand Oaks. I disagree with that. We, the Measure E and Thousand Oaks Boulevard are super important right now, no doubt about that. But I think because of the fact that it is so important, why don't we have, or at least start out with a public study session so that we can get input from others rather than trying to contain it through committee? Yes, the committees are open, but I think that there may be so many differing opinions, perhaps, or that we may get a lot of vital feedback that would help us in determining the future. Although I do believe we have the tools in place to determine Thousand Oaks Boulevard, simply because we do have the specific plan, we do have units already allocated. If more units are to be allocated, then certainly this is something that should be done in a public forum, in my opinion. So, I think it was you, Mr. Fox, who actually suggested a study session recently, and I think that is a wonderful idea to get the input from the public first before we do anything else.
If I could just, the, I think a study session's a good idea. I also think that in order for the study session to have as much value as it could provide, we need to frame the issues, and there are many, and they are not framed correctly. There's a lot of unanswered questions. I would respectfully disagree with some of the Boulevard folks that say, hey, we already have a specific plan, if you'd just read it, which I know we all did some time ago, but, you know, I think for the most part, we'd have to go back and look at it in detail. I think the committee needs to do that. And, but I do not agree that just the specific plan as a standalone document, if we just simply follow that, that's going to get us where we need to go. I think that's, in our last goal-setting session, not this one, but the one prior to that, I think the entire council, all five of us at the time, were concerned about a piecemeal approach to that specific plan, and specifically, most specifically, standalone housing projects that were part of the specific plan, but they clearly were not the intent of the council. I think one of the things that there's no question is that this council has complete agreement in what our vision is for the so-called mixed use, and it is not a standalone housing project. And so, I think, and again, I think a committee taking some field trips, looking at identified locations, there may be, there may really be the reality that as Thousand Oaks Boulevard sits and the property owners are who they are, we may have great difficulty getting the vision that we want, simply because the properties and how they're aligned, they don't lend themselves to that type of use. So, if that's the case, the committee would have to come back and tell the council unless property owners are going to buy and kind of co-mingle properties and create an area where you can actually get this mixed use, it's going to be very, very difficult to achieve. That's a lot of detailed work, and I just think that needs to be done prior to study sessions. I'm all for, we can have multiple study sessions. I just think the committee's got to frame the issue on, this is exactly the reality of what we're looking at, and the specific plan and the three-mile length of the Boulevard, I think, in and of itself, is not complete enough.
Yeah, I would, I surmise that the committee will come up with recommendations that they already endorse for approval by the full council, not just recommendations. So, in that essence, it's not going to be as neutral, perhaps, as it should be, because two council members already worked on this. Again, I am very much in favor of a study session, and I think the issues that need to be framed, as you said, are the housing units, Measure E, and traffic. So, that is something that we already know will be a hurdle, and I can't think of anything else, really, since we already worked out and ironed out everything else, including building height. So, what you were suggesting is that the committee might actually come back with an amended Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan.
May I chime in?
That's not correct.
I think it's one thing to write up a specific plan, it's another thing to implement it. And our specific plan's almost four years old now, and to my knowledge, we have not implemented any of it, other than some facelifting along the Boulevard. But none of the intent of the specific plan, the pedestrian-friendly, the infrastructure, the mixed use, none of it has been implemented. And I think there's a reason for that. I think there's a disconnect between what the council vision is for the Boulevard and what some of the property owners' vision is for the Boulevard. And I think an ad hoc committee could bring a lot of value to that discussion, because it kind of could crystallize what the issues are. And I, and by no means want to, you know, cut the full council out from this process. The ad hoc committee would simply report back to the council what their findings were, and then, by then, we'd have a fifth council member too, I'm sure, and it would be up to the whole five-member council to discuss the findings and work out an implementation direction to get the Boulevard moving. I mean, I have a personal vision of what I'd like to see, and it involves building our downtown core, it involves retail and shopping, and a destination for the citizens of Thousand Oaks to go to, and, you know, but there's a lot of questions out there, and I think the ad hoc committee could do a lot of the legwork and then present it to the council, just as Mr. Fox mentioned, we did with the, we did with the theaters. And I think that worked out quite well, and we had a very robust discussion about it. And I'm perfectly open to, the whole thing culminating in a study session, that'd be fine. The more transparent, the better. And I've just been told we have a speaker card. So, let us, let us go to the speaker, and that is Mr. Herbert Hutchinson. And I beg your pardon for not calling you earlier, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Hutchinson, and I've resided in Westlake Village, Thousand Oaks, for 32 years. I'm retired from 40 years' career in system safety engineering. For the past five years, I have been analyzing the way the city of Thousand Oaks addresses residents' concerns for the safety of their families on residential streets. And I think you all know, you've received the executive summary, and I don't have to say much more about that. I apologize for the length of it. Two pieces of information dominated my approach to my system safety analysis, and I'd like to show that to you. The first is from the Accident Research Center at Monash University, Victoria, Australia, who did a forensic analysis of 250 pedestrian crashes, injuries, and concluded that at a speed above 35 miles an hour, there is no possibility that the impacted human will As you proceed down from 35 miles an hour, the probability of survival does increase significantly. And it's that, for that very reason, that the 25 mile an hour speed limit was set on residential streets, was to give the humans, the pedestrians, a chance that if they are impacted, they have a, over 75% chance of surviving. The other one was from the Office of Safety in the Federal Highway Administration, 2002. A street with sidewalks is up to 88.2% less likely to have a pedestrian crash than a street without sidewalks. Now, as you, if you've read my report, in Thousand Oaks, the time period from 1984 to 2000, there are seven streets that were approved for speed humps, but speed humps do not solve the problem of no sidewalks, and it's shown on here on this chart. When a street has no sidewalks, the pedestrians have no place to walk but in the street. Okay? And this is the second part of it. The other two streets, the most recent being Calle Alivo. So, let me, I see the red light, let me just jump to the end. I have to ask each of you to consider which is more important, protecting the lives of school-age pedestrians walking on streets with no sidewalks, or preparing and hosting number 10, preparing and hosting the SIFTO T.O.V.A. festival in Fall 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. I have to ask you to finish up. Thank you. All right. So, just as a comment, I will say that the staff did a good job of putting our priorities together, I do believe. We were, you know, thank you again, Mr. Hutchinson. That evening, we had, threw out quite a bit, and I think the list is very reflective of what we were all talking about that evening. So, I guess the issue here is the ad hoc committee. Ms. Bill Verpenya, what do you think? Or Mr. Price maybe has one more comment about that.
Well, I don't have any more comments. I'm convinced of the effectiveness of the, working through a committee. We've seen it, certainly seen it work in this city over the years. I've been part of a couple of different committees on other boards that I sit on, and I think that the work that we've been able to do has gone a long way toward it, making it easier for the greater body to make a decision. So, with that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Bill Verpenya.
I don't know whether any decision will be easy on the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan and... plan and development. It is a hot potato. But I have to say that I will be much more comfortable if I knew that there will be a study session held that will reveal the recommendations.
Looks like Mr. Price would be amenable to that.
Because we do need, besides meeting with property owners and developers and all of the stakeholders, I think the public is a stakeholder as much as anybody else, and they need to weigh in on this, and that's why we need the study session.
No question about it.
And I'm in 100% agreement of that. I have, for the last year, been talking to various staff members about having a study session on the Boulevard. But I think that this will, as Mr. Fox points out, frame the issues and allow that study session to be much more productive. I really do. And so, and with that, may I?
So will you?
I will make that part of the motion.
Yes.
Yes. So my motion would be to approve staff recommendations, one through five, or one through six, actually, to include the establishment of an ad hoc city council, Thousand Oaks Boulevard-specific Plan Committee. I would direct, ask that that committee be comprised of the mayor and Councilmember Fox, if he is willing, and that, at the conclusion of that, that there be a study session, a public study session, where we can discuss the outcome and results of those meetings. Ad hoc committee's work.
All right. Sound good? Ms. Bill Verpenya, discussion?
Not for me, no.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the goal...
Yeah.
Yep, Mr. Fox, go ahead.
I think it's certainly the spirit of it. But I would ask that you provide the committee the flexibility to bring back to the council, maybe even before we're complete, in total, that there may be some value in a periodic report, study session. I don't know. You know, we're going to, it's a very complex issue, and so your motion was rooted very structured at the completion. I'm just trying to think forward that there may be some value in some periodic report back, if the committee sees that there's value there, so.
I'd like to add that, Mr. Price.
Yeah, I certainly didn't mean to narrowly focus that. And I would be, I would add to the motion there that the committee, whenever they feel necessary, come back with progress reports to the council, the full council.
All right. Mr. Mitnick has a comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when the committee is done, it'll come to council with proposals, and then the council would have to act on that. I know, I just want to make that clear, because you talked about findings and, yeah, there would be proposals, recommendations, that type of thing. We can help with the wording.
All right. So the motion is to approve the priorities and goals, et cetera, and establish the ad hoc committee that will come back to the council with periodic updates, I think that's a good idea, and culminate in a study session. Did I get that right? All right, let's vote on it.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And we're moving on now to 9E, Department Report from Jeff Spector. I'll beg your pardon. 9C, that's also Jeff Spector, on the general plan update, including the housing element.
Good evening, Mayor Adams.
Hello, Jeff.
Hi, and members of the city council. This item, there's no PowerPoint for this one, I'll keep it brief, it's a late hour, has to do with this general plan progress report. California law requires all cities to submit an annual report concerning the progress they're making in implementing their general plans, including the general plan housing element, as well as the activities of their redevelopment agency, housing successor agencies. The report that's provided in the council packet tonight outlines the progress that the city made in this regard in 2014. For example, it shows the city approved two amendments to its general plan land use element. The city built sidewalks and bikeways as directed by the circulation element, and adopted a comprehensive update to the safety element of the general plan. The city also acquired open space, or land for open space purposes, and thereby implemented the goals and policies of the open space element. Concerning the housing element progress report, that report that's in your packet, it shows that permits were issued to construct 47 new homes within the city in 2014. Of these, 20 are affordable apartments, and that's associated with the area housing authority's Garden View Terrace development. The city provided financial assistance to that development. And in addition, the city provided block grants, community development block grant funds to many mansions to rehabilitate 151 affordable housing units. Concerning the redevelopment agency successor, Housing Successor Agency report, that's provided as attachment two, it provides information that's required, very specific information that's required by the state regarding the financial activities of the successor, Housing Successor Agency. So with that, I'll just say that staff recommends that the council receive and file the report and direct us to submit that report to the state. That concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Spector. Any questions? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'd move the staff recommendation, one and two.
All right. Recommendation, a motion on the floor, vote please.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. And, Mr. Spector, don't go anywhere. Tell us about Rancho Canejo.
In this case, we have a PowerPoint, makes it a little bit more interesting to present and to watch and listen to. What we're dealing with here is a request to initiate amendments to the general plan land use element, as well as the Rancho Canejo-specific plan. We're suggesting that the council initiate an amendment to the general plan land use element to high-density residential, oh, from high-density residential to industrial, and amend the specific plan from high-density to employment park. The property we're talking about here is highlighted on this land use element map. This property is high-density residential, the blue is institutional, this is a general plan map, institutional is blue, and the gray is industrial. The property in question's about 10 acres, it's vacant, and it happens to be, there happens to be a future two-lane roadway that bisects the property. This is an aerial view that shows the parcels in question, this property is graded. And as a matter of background, this land was rezoned in the past in conjunction with the previous housing element update. And the rezoning was done to meet the city's mandated share of the regional housing need for lower-income households. There's three important considerations that relate to this proposal. One has to do with land use compatibility. This site is not ideal for housing, and the reasons have to do with the fact that it's in a substantially industrial area, and it is not close at all to schools, parks, shopping, and other services. In fact, one and a half to two miles away from those items. Secondly, this residential designation's not needed to meet the city's RENA allocation for this current housing element. So the previous time, we needed it, this time, at this point in time, it's no longer needed. And thirdly, this change will not increase the general plan residential capacity. In fact, it will decrease the residential capacity. And as such, it makes units, dwelling units, 217, or 297, in fact, of Measure E cap space available for use on other sites. So to sum it up, it's staff recommendation that the city council initiate the proposed amendments to the general plan land use element and the Rancho Canejo-specific plan, and refer this item to the planning commission for recommendation. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Spector. Questions for Mr. Spector?
Yeah, Mr. Spector, what will then be the total number of units in Measure E in the bank?
Well, we have more than 400 now.
Yes.
And so this would add to 97, so close to 700.
700, 200 and something have already been allocated to the Boulevard. 200 and, I forget how many, 14?
I think John wants to clarify.
The 200 are already part of the general plan within the Boulevard area, so the 700 is the difference between the current general plan capacity, including the Boulevard's 200, and the Measure E baseline that was set in 96.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion, then, please, if there's no more discussion. Mr. Price?
Sure, I would move staff's recommendation.
All right. We have a motion to move the initiation forward. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Price, I believe you have a report for us on the League of California Cities' Public Safety Policy Committee.
I do. Last Thursday, I attended the League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, and we dealt with a number of issues. A lot of it was cleanup from the damage done by Prop 47. Prop 47, if you'll recall, was a voter enacted proposition that reduced a number of felony crimes to misdemeanor status, some of which were crimes that I think the public was not aware of when they enacted this, when they voted for it. Laws dealing with date rape drug, date rape drugs. There's a bill, several bills, actually, that are cleanup for that, and would restore those, possession of those drugs, to felony status, or what we call wobbler. They can be prosecuted as either misdemeanors or felonies. In addition to that, there were a number of bills dealing with firearms, stolen firearms, possession of stolen firearms, and the theft of firearms. One of the things that Prop 47 did is it made, raised the threshold for theft to, in order for it to be a felony, it had to be something of $950 in value or more. And most handguns happen to be less than that, unless it's some sort of a collector gun, and therefore, that would necessarily make the theft of a handgun a misdemeanor. So there was a bill that would, there were several bills dealing with the handguns, and the committee voted in support of the narcotic bills and the handgun bills. And the other thing that we discussed was the League and California Police Chiefs bill, sponsored bill, that would establish a regulatory framework for medicinal marijuana. And this, we, this bill was also introduced last legislative session, although it did not get through. I think they have worked out some of the issues that allowed it not, or didn't allow it to pass last time, and we're very hopeful that we will get it through this time and restore local control, and it is something that law enforcement can live with. So we were in support of that and opposed a bill that would have contradicted everything that the one that we supported did. So those were just some of the highlights of that meeting, and it was a good meeting, and I'll be back again in June.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Appreciate your work on the League. Good job. And, Mr. City Manager, follow-up.
Was it the last one? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up items from comments made by members of the public tonight. The next city council meeting, two weeks from today, on the 28th. At this point in time, we have one department report, and that'll be an update to you on the theater's box office ticketing and management system. We'll have a public hearing on the user fees for 2015, 16. You did hear a discussion about fees involving oak trees and that type of thing. Study session also related to the budget, the proposed capital improvement program budget for the next two fiscal years, 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. That's it at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr.
I do have to point out that on the Arbor Earth Day that was talked about earlier, for those who want more information, simply go to the city's website. There's also a website I've been asked to promote, www.tokes.org/go-green. Scandinavian Festival is also this weekend. You know, there's a lot of great stuff going on. Go to the city's website, go to the theater's website. Cabrillo opens this weekend, you heard the singers. Lots of great stuff. We need to fill the seats, folks, so the council likes to have a balanced budget at the end of the year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn tonight's council meeting in memory of a longtime resident, volunteer, and senior advocate, Dave Grimm. On April 3rd, Dave passed away. We lost a good friend and a senior champion. Dave was a 42-year resident. He was a commissioner on the council on aging for six years, and he was its chair for the last two. He advocated improving the quality of life for seniors and all residents by enhancing our city's public transit system, and he served as the liaison to the senior adult master plan transportation team. Dave's avid volunteerism left an indelible and positive mark in Thousand Oaks, particularly with respect to our seniors. Dave served his country in Vietnam. He was a lieutenant in the Navy. He was exuberant about life, he's a world traveler, a classic car collector, an avid reader, and he loved to play tennis. All who knew him admired his hard work, his compassion for others, and his positive personality. Dave is survived by his wife, Corinne, and his sons, David and Dan. Our sincere, deep sympathies go out to Dave's family and to his many friends. He will be missed here in Thousand Oaks. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, council members, and we will adjourn to our next meeting on April 28th.